She could ready, if you can close that door, that would be grand. Thank you.
This is his birthday, right?
Yep. Very good afternoon. Welcome. This is a special city council meeting, three thirty on Tuesday, September thirteenth. Like to call the meeting to order and acknowledge that the press and public have been duly notified of the meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Want to do a roll call, just to verify for them, please?
Absolutely. You can, councilmembers, make sure your microphones are on and you're speaking. Councilmember Han?
Here.
Councilmember Gogian?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Streetman?
Here.
Councilmember Popson?
Here.
Councilmember Myers?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Mayor Pounds?
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. First item on the agenda is citizens' comments. We have a number of folks signed up tonight and a long agenda, so we're just asking residents to adhere to our three-minute limit. So everyone can be heard. We have an overall limit of thirty minutes and a reminder to address council as a body and not as individual members. Sir Nicole?
Mr. Randy Bell?
Good, thank you, Randy Bell. It is increasingly apparent that a simple lease assignment has been badly botched. Joe Rice, his Barrigan's attorney, requested a simple reassignment as is of the Marina outpost and Marina joint venture leases, yet council allowed for an avalanche of amendments to continue into September. With no committee representation, the mayor has labeled negotiations an administrative task. The mayor claims no involvement in these negotiations. Our administrator has no authority to negotiate. Our municipal attorney reports to full council, not the mayor. During my council tenure, we hired Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd specifically to handle complex real estate transactions. Yet Brian Kits has been relegated to the backseat of negotiations. Why? Municipal Attorney Halverson's been granted free rein to negotiate in an unelected unauthorized capacity on the community's behalf. What is not clear is which side is being represented. The larger issue is how and by what authority? The mayor should be willing to answer this simple question. The premise that we regain is shared parking lot already belonging to the city is well documented nonsense. On April nineteenth, I O P City Council addressed an item under new business and ways and means. At one oh five in that meeting, Councilmember Hunt addressed council's ability to make change to current parking management stating, as I understand it, there was nothing stopping us from doing so. We're now in our twelve through thirteen iteration of lease and ordinance changes. Council received the packet on Friday at the required deadline, seventy-two pages with new commercial giveaways. Note that first reading can only be amended at second reading. Yet we have an attorney negotiated document presented Friday with significant change followed by a hastily called meeting to drive the mayor's endgame. A vote on second reading will no doubt be called. No worries. There's no intent to live up to the campaign promise of residents first. It's not what I want that matters. It's the public interest. In the matter of Councilmember Myers alleged code of conduct violation, it is obvious that mayoral overreach will be weaponized unless checked by the public. Neither you or any individual council member has the authority to impugn and indict fellow sitting council members. The email that went to council stated your disclosure of the contents of the attorney-client privileged information disclosure of communications made during executive session is a flagrant and intentional violation of section eight. Really, there's no need for a hearing since without authority, Katie's already been convicted of a flagrant and intentional violation. What happened to issues of personnel being handled in executive session? Or was that confused with executive privilege, which does not exist? The distance between kindness and vindication is significant. With the thinnest of electoral margins, we now have residents asking, what would Ryan do? This is a sad day for the city when we see this behavior directed at a council member. Thank you.
Ms. Suzy Wheeler?
Happy to see so many people here. I don't think it was expected. Every time I think this Marina lease fiasco can't get worse, it does. Most residents agree that previous councils have stuck residents with a very poor Marina lease. One current council member was around for the majority of those four decisions, which include removing an audit requirement, reducing revenue due to the city via five hundred thousand dollar escalation clause increase, and extending the lease for thirty additional years without an RFP. I'm not sure how a CPA could vote that any of these were in the best interests of residents, but that's what happened, and that's what we're stuck with. Now we've got Marina Gate twenty twenty-two replete with twelve or thirteen versions of amendments, numerous last-minute special council meetings, seemingly unending executive sessions, and threats of lawsuits. The results seem to be that some members of this council are willing to give away more and more of the city's interest in the Marina, including land and revenue. And let's be clear, this is land that was purchased by the residents for the residents. Councilmember Hans stated in the July twenty-sixth meeting that the city can't make additional demands during the transfer process. We can only ensure that the city isn't harmed. I would like to ask all of council, how can you ensure the city isn't harmed if you don't have full disclosure of who we're doing business with? We take the mayor's approach of, you don't have to have full disclosure. Can they run a Maria? Can they pay the bills? We set ourselves up to potentially do business with the likes of a Bernie Madoff. Aren't we harmed by not receiving due diligence? Aren't we harmed by removing a personal guarantee or security deposit? Aren't we harmed by giving away land that was not previously listed as lease premises? I say we're not harmed by ensuring that we know exactly who we're doing business with and not just a representative and by transferring the lease as is. We are definitely harmed by these ridiculous amendments and the perception of backdoor strong-arm negotiations. I'd like to ask council, who exactly has participated in these negotiations? I made repeated requests to have a forum with full council on the record to discuss the issues of this lease transfer. I've even asked at minimum, they suspend the rules of a regular meeting to allow for open citizen dialogue. These requests have been ignored and labeled as unnecessary. But miraculously, we're able to schedule three listening sessions regarding short-term rentals. Council's been able to schedule seven special council meetings just this year with four of them being about the Marina lease transfer. I'd think that a multimillion-dollar asset with a transfer that requires more than a dozen versions of lease amendments would merit at least one meeting of record where council would allow open dialogue with residents. Now we have Councilmember Myers, who's facing the threat of a disciplinary hearing for trying to be transparent to the residents she represents. I don't see how her sharing that members of council have been threatened with lawsuits in this process is any different than the mayor telling me directly what legal counsel's advice was during executive session pertaining to the parking lot.
Ms. Wheeler, you're gonna need to wrap up your comments.
I'm almost done. Perhaps I don't understand the standards here, but they appear to be double. I'll be honest, I didn't vote for Ms. Myers in the election, but I applaud her fortitude to be upfront and transparent. And after watching the events of this transfer circus, I wish I could change several of my votes. Thank you.
Ms. Neemus? Ms. Glenda Neemus?
Glenda Neemus, full-time resident. I'd like to address three things. I'm going to start with the resolution for discipline for Councilman Myers. Is this a confidentiality and FOIA issue? If so, I have the rules right here. I've read them all, and there is no negotiating of a new contract. This is a reassignment, not with clarifications. So anything discussed in it should be open to FOIA. Secondly, here is the code of conduct. I've read through the whole code of conduct, and the only thing I can find in here that is in question is about confidentiality. Well, if there's no confidentiality under FOIA, then how can you have a code of conduct breach? Next is the question of attorney-client privilege. Well, how can you have attorney-client privilege if you're not negotiating the contract? So I'm a bit confused about what that part is all about. The first issue on the code of conduct says that people have breached ours. Members shall work toward the common good of the residents and the visitors of the city and not for private and personal interest. And I see that Councilman Myers has done that by letting us know this undue pressure being applied to council members that may affect their vote on the Marina reassignment. Once again, not a contract negotiation. So I see this as a bit of a witch hunt, and I think it should stop. There shouldn't be any more of that. I would also like to speak about a separate issue, which is the parking lot exchange of the employee parking lot for the shared parking lot. I went down there, took pictures, listened to people talk about it. It looks like a win all the way around. And that has nothing to do with the lease reassignment. It's a separate issue altogether. So I hope that we will look at doing that. It would uncomplicate the parking lot. It would have benefits for more parking for the restaurant and for the residents. And we would gain a beautiful green space all the way along the intercoastal. And the last thing is tonight, there's going to be a second reading on the lease. And I think it would be wise to consider reassignment lease going back to the original form as it was asked, which was a simple reassignment. Then we could actually have no amendments to that, no changes. Then, after a year or so, we could see the performance of, say, if it were assigned to Morgan Creek Marina, whomever it is assigned to, we could then see their business plan, which is a bit fuzzy right now. And Mike surely would know more about his vision and plans, which he really couldn't tell us much about. He didn't really know.
Ms. Neemus, tell me, do you have a wrap up your comments, please?
I will, thank you. And and we can see if he's been successful and in financial matters and if the Isle of Palms residents are satisfied. And then we could talk about renegotiating a lease with perhaps offering an option to renew based on terms that we would set. Thank you very much for listening.
Mr. Jim Ray, Ry, excuse me.
Jim Ry, thirty-nine oh four, Camden Boulevard. I kind of come from a different perspective. I served for the city on the Real Property Advisory Committee and, you know, and involved in the planning commission and and my vision for the Marina has always been pretty high. I always thought it could look like the Rec Center or National Park or something down there. I mean, I just think that, you know, it didn't have to be industrial. And, you know, when I came on the planning committee, there was a metal building down there, a landscape company renting down there. So we have made some improvements. It's a heavily trafficked site. It's you know, it gets a lot of use and there's a lot of challenges down there. I think that we need to stay as positive as we can. But the simple assignment has, you know, some would say going sideways, gone off the tracks. In the restaurant business, you might say in the weeds. You know, when the city gave Brian and his group down there a thirty-year lease, they got a bundle of rights. They got something worth something. They got something they could borrow on. They had something they can sell. Every time an amendment is made, that changes that value. And what should have been just a simple assignment of an as-is, or you can even say as-is amended lease should have been very simple. But, you know, it's going way. I don't know how you want to say it, whatever word you want to use, but it's become much more complicated than it really needed to truly be. You know, some would say that, you know, I'm a critical guy, that I come down here, I'm negative and I I'm kind of a critical thinker. I'm a son of a coach and, you know, there's always room for improvement if you're a son of a coach and it's not so much if you win or lose, but it's how you play the game. You can play your best and still lose. So, you know, my expectations are pretty high and we all come from different backgrounds and we all come from different experiences and there's a lot to be said for someone who's sitting up on council or has set up on council before. I haven't been there. I haven't, you know, spent four years of prodonance service back to the community, but I know everybody's trying to do the best they can with their experience that they have. It's unfortunate that we have such a poorly written lease. You know, since we, the citizens, the city, you know, we are the owners. Unfortunately, we've let the tenants and their attorneys draft leases in the past and then try to correct their version of what they think they want as a lease. So and I think one of the major challenges that we have down there is the poor oversight that the city has had over the years and the total number of seats that were added to the restaurant down there over the years.
Mr. Ry, I need you to wrap up your comments, please.
The seats have probably doubled in the restaurant since it was originally taken over. And the store now has fifty-three bar stools, four picnic tables, and a U-shaped bench bench in the back for seating. You know, I think we all enjoy going down there and it's a great asset for the city and a great place to get a lunch or cold beverage. I think the city could there were some positive things that come from new management, new leadership, fresh eyes. And I think in the end, I think it would be a good transition for the city. And I just, I think if we agree upon the facts that we can agree to disagree, but let's agree upon the facts. And I just have a handout here for the council members that from my personal file, from my time on the Real Property Advisory Committee, you might find helpful.
We'll pass it down, Jim.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Ms. Patsey Hindman?
I have no notes, so I hope I will make all my points in a clear manner. Um, I look at you and I say, what a mess. I think we can all agree, no matter how it comes down, it's a mess. And it's a mess because shortly you will be discussing and voting on the lease transfer. But that vote is now tainted. Why is it tainted? It's tainted because issues of truth, transparency, and trust. Comes to truth. The op-ed by Mrs. Myers claims that certain statements were made by Mr. Barrigan's attorney, Mr. Rice, and also certain statements were made by the city attorney. Are these truths? I'm inclined to feel that they are truthful because I don't believe that she would have made those statements if the statements were not true. The next issue of truth is, is there any truth to the claims that some members of council have acted inappropriately during these negotiations? I don't know if it's true or not, but apparently the claims have been out there. So truth gets called into question. Then we have transparency. The previous council was criticized often for failure to be transparent. The mayor and this council came in with, many of them ran on a promise of transparency, but we haven't seen that. We still see executive session one right after the other. We have no idea what goes on. They go in, they talk for a while, and then they come out and say, no decisions were made. Well, they had to be talking about something. And if they weren't making decisions, they were at least changing, exchanging information that would influence perhaps a future decision or vote, but we don't know what that is. We got to see a glimpse of what transparency is like when we read this op-ed. Thank you, Katie. I think you should be commended for that. If there was if there was more transparency, you would find less distrust. Which brings me to my next thing, the trust issue. How can we trust that the vote this afternoon will be every one of you voting for what you think is the best interest of Isle of Palms residents? Or perhaps some of you are voting because you're afraid of being sued. Whatever behavior did or didn't go on, something happened that gives rise to a claim from one lawyer, Mr. Rice, saying something went on and from our city lawyer saying that he can find no evidence of that. Where is the transparency in all of this? We have seventy-two pages in the agenda packet today, lots of supporting information for the Marina and the issues that are that are going to be discussed. Not one page of background information on the charges against Katie Myers. Why is that? Rumor has it that all of council was sent an email describing those charges.
Ms. Hindman, I'm gonna need you to wrap up your comments, please.
I'm very close to being finished. But the citizens of Isle of Palms were not privy to that information. Unless, of course, you read today's letter to the editor, the Island Eye News, in which Councilmember Han laid out charges. I don't know if they're his charges, council's charges, or what, but that seems a strangely inappropriate way for the citizens of Isle of Palms to be notified about what's behind all this. Thank you.
Ms. Brenda Rosenthal?
Tough acts to follow. I'm Brenda Rosenthal, and I'm a full-time and permanent resident. And I did write notes because I wanted to stay focused and kind. So I am neither disgruntled nor angry. I am more befuddled and perplexed, however. Many of us residents became more interested in local politics about six years ago, mainly due to Marina issues. At that time, we recognized what a bad lease had been negotiated on our behalf. I actually contacted Dick Cronin, the mayor at the time, and he assured me that it was a terrific lease. Anybody would be jealous to have it. Well, with he was. I have shown that lease to many top commercial agents, and they all without fail say it's the worst thing they've ever seen. So you can understand our intense interest in this current transfer. We are suffering from PTSD on how residents have been handled as related to this Marina. And you guys should know that. When this first became public knowledge of a lease transfer, I actually went into Mayor Pounds' office and I spoke with Scott and I wrote letters to council. And the only thing I asked was that we hire expert guidance and counsel because as smart as all of you are, none of you are first in that world. I'm a real estate agent, so I'm a little bit versed, but certainly not for a commercial lease of this kind. It was a simple request, I think, and yet it seems to be ignored. I keep asking, who is negotiating on our behalf? And the mayor says it's staff level. So I guess that leaves Desiree and Mr. Halverson. And with all due respect to them, neither of them are residents nor, to my knowledge, have either of them ever reached out to ask residents what they may want, nor are they experts in the field of contract commercial lease negotiations. This is after all, our Marina, you have been elected to represent us and our interests and not to patronize us. Keep everything in executive session and ignore us. So again, I am confused as to the process that's going on here. The restaurant lease was negotiated by a real property committee, Randy Bell, Jimmy Ward, and Sandy Forens. It seems to have been done with much deliberation, transparency, and will surely serve the residents well. This current negotiation, whomever is doing it, seems to always favor Mr. Schuler. By the way, I've met Mr. Schuler. I've spent hours with him. He's a very nice guy. He seems to want to be negotiable and work with the residents and with the other tenants.
Ms. Rosenthal, I'm gonna need you to wrap your comments up, please.
I don't fault Mr. Schuler. He's just smarter and had a better negotiator. So finally, I think former Councilman Bell is being called upon full-time to help residents understand this, and I would think y'all would be wise to seek his guidance. He's been through a lot with this. And finally, I am total supporter of Councilman Myers and appreciate her service. And whatever you try to do to her, please know that many of us are watching and are in her corner. Thank you.
Ms. Mimi Wood?
Good afternoon. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your service and thanks for letting me speak. I would respectfully ask, this may be a gross oversimplification, that everybody take a deep breath and a giant step backwards. And I would ask you to put aside your past, the past wrongs, the past perceived wrongs, resentments. I would ask you to put aside egos, hidden agendas, personal agendas, fear of financial loss, envy of other people's financial gain. It is what it is. We got something in front of us. So in the interest of placing principles before personalities, I would ask you to please consider, as a council, moving this forward, doing what's in the best interest of the community, of the residents, and voting to transfer the leases. Thank you.
Ms. Kathy Campbell?
Kathy Campbell, Twentieth Avenue. I was very pleased to read Councilmember Myers's op-ed in the September eighth Island Eye News as it was a clear articulate timeline of events leading up to today's second reading of the proposed Marina lease transfer. I am confused, however, as to why events transpired as they did, and I am quite dismayed to learn that threatening lawsuits are looming overhead, possibly causing some council members to vote a certain way to avoid being served with one. Some are being accused of having ulterior motives. Is having island residents' interests in mind now considered an ulterior motive? I would instead like to know, what is the ulterior motive of those in favor of giving up things to a new landlord and getting nothing in return for residents? Why would five of you vote to turn over the employee lot to the new tenant if it was never a part of the original lease? Really? Mr. Schuler was originally agreeable to a lease transfer as is, but now he is not? City council requested nine due diligence items from him and he provided only two? If this can cause a lawsuit against council members, seems to me like we need a different lawyer. Additionally, while it is blatantly unfair to the new restaurant to allow the Marina store to turn to a bar, I have for twenty years greatly enjoyed the beautiful views on the deck of the Marina store after purchasing a six-pack inside and would very much like to continue doing so. This council's experimentation with workshops is not working for this community. Workshops replacing committees is not working for this community. Real Property Committee needs to address the restaurant lease and present its finding to council before this lease is transferred with any amendments. Just as the ATAX Committee needed to address the spending of ATAX money before we handed over one million dollars to the Charleston Area Visitors Bureau this year. The new ATAX Committee members, the new ATAX Committee members sat in these very chairs and decided that they had no other choice but to pay C V B when a perfectly good alternative exists with the folly beach model, as you all are very well aware.
All right. Thank you all very much. And thank you for sticking to the timeframe. Very helpful when we've got such a big agenda. So our third item on the agenda is second reading for the ordinances as mentioned.
Just make. Can I, can I make a motion that we suspend the rule of orders and move item D to first?
I second that.
Discussion comments? Would you roll call? I mean.
You would like me to?
Sure.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
I'm trying to understand.
We're just voting to reorder the agenda?
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand the purpose behind those. I think it's important to get that very, that issue out of the way before we discuss the rest of the issues.
Councilmember Gogian?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Mayor Pounds?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you. So item D is consideration of resolution to hold a public disciplinary hearing regarding Councilmember Myers alleged violation of the City of Isle of Palms Code of Conduct. It's been referenced here tonight, but on September eighth, twenty twenty-two, Councilmember Myers wrote an op-ed article in the Island Eye newspaper titled A Closer Look at the Isle of Palms Marina Leases. Although the article was titled to be about the leases, the beginning of the article stated the amendments are available to the public, so I will not go into them. I will not go into them here. What I would like to share is some of what has gone on behind the scenes. The article then went on to directly quote portions of private attorney-client communications that the city attorney provided to the city council in a memorandum dated June ninth, twenty twenty-two. The article also disclosed communications between Mrs. Myers and the city attorney that occurred in executive session. The memorandum dated June ninth, twenty twenty-two, which was emailed to council the same day, was explicitly labeled in all cap, all capitalized letters, confidential attorney-client privileged material on each page. Cover letter email sent to council explicitly stated in the subject line of the email in all caps, attorney-client privileged. Our city attorney reminded council members in the transmittal email Our city attorney reminded council members in the transmittal email sending the memorandum, please do not forward this email to anyone or disseminate or discuss the contents to anyone outside of council as it would be a waiver of the privilege. City never voted to release this information and it was instead disclosed for political purposes. Contents of the memorandum and communications had been confidential prior to the article being written by Councilmember Myers. Our city code of contact, conduct states in section eight confidential information. Members must maintain the confidentiality of all written materials and verbal information provided to members, which is confidential or privileged under South Carolina law, including information provided during executive session. Legal advice provided by the city's legal council and any information otherwise protected by South Carolina law. Members shall not disclose confidential information without proper legal authorization or use information to advance their personal, financial or other private interest. Again, this is from our code of conduct, very well-defined process. We mostly copied the code of conduct from the city of Charleston. Um, so with that, I would move for a resolution for a public disciplinary hearing of Councilmember Myers for a violation of section eight of our code of conduct.
I second.
Second.
So according to our code, there's a motion in two seconds, which we've had. So now we can move to any discussion that someone would like to have.
Like to go ahead. That's all right. And I apologize, I am mostly going to read because I have a lot of things that I need to say and need to get it right. So. First of all, thank you to all of you who came to support not just me, but this wonderful city and transparent government. The mayor has called this both to use his words and I quote, "Your disclosure of the contents of attorney-client privileged information and disclosure of communications made during executive session is a flagrant and intentional violation of section eight," end quote. The fact that the mayor has already made up his mind on this issue brings me to the code of conduct itself. That is the document that is referencing section eight and is the purpose of this discussion that we're having right now. So I'd like to discuss two additional sections of the code of conduct. Section five, discussions, decisions based on merit. When making decisions, members shall maintain an open mind until the conclusion of the hearing on the matter. Section six, conflict of interest. Members shall avoid any conflicts of interest or the appearance thereof. The conflict of interest is really what brings us here today. Merriam-Webster defines a conflict of interest as, quote, "A conflict between the private interests and the official or professional responsibilities of a person in a position of trust." The statements made by Mr. Halbertson conveying the threats and allegations that were made by Joe Rice and Mike Schuler against this body. The indivi- I'm sorry, the individuals on this body, not the body as a whole, have created a situation where there could be the existence or appearance of a conflict of interest. It is this potential conflict of interest that made me decide that it was in my fiduciary duty to share the information with the constituents whom I swore to represent. Only by addressing these issues in public can we possibly hope to remove the taint caused by the possible conflict of interest. Therefore, I fully support a public hearing on these issues. While the code of conduct was voluntary, I am aware of its guidelines and standards. And I fully support the opportunity to discuss section eight in the public hearing. However, there are significant problems with the code of conduct, which I have to admit, I did vote for earlier in the year. And now that I've gotten intimately acquainted with the document, I realize that it's significantly lacking. It provides for the procedure of notice of such a hearing, but does not provide anything regarding the procedure itself. Therefore, before we can set a hearing and move forward on a hearing, in order for there to be proper due process, we have to answer following questions. The code of, sorry. Questions are, will I be provided with representation? I fully intend to be and believe that the city should provide it for me. I intend to call witnesses. Does the city have subpoena power? If not, how will the city obtain witnesses? I demand the right to confront all witnesses. Will witnesses be sworn in? What is the process for presenting evidence? Who will preside over this hearing? Is it one of the ones that has accused me of this wrongdoing? Who will rule on conflicts? What will be the burden of proof? Who carries the burden of proof? Who will represent the city in this case? Until these questions at a minimum, and I'm sure there are more, because quite honestly, I've only been able to start thinking about this since Friday. Until they are answered, we cannot ensure that this will be a fair and unbiased hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Yeah. The item that's on the agenda is consideration of resolution to hold a public disciplinary hearing from Councilmember Myers, alleged violation of city of Alapalm's code of conduct. That was item number eight. That's what we're dealing with today is a simple vote as to whether or not we approve that hearing. We all as a body were presented with the code of conduct. We had much discussion about it and we voted unanimously to adopt that code of conduct. I have no idea who signed off on the con- on the code of conduct. It was purely voluntary. I know I did. I turned my, mine in and said, I'm going to abide by that. So I'm assuming everyone else did, but whether or not they did, it is a voluntary situation. I think Councilmember Myers raises some good questions as to how we go if we do vote in favor of a hearing. And she, in her words, is supportive of a hearing. And, uh, and I'm just speaking up to say, what we're voting on here today is the consideration of a resolution to hold a public hearing in regards to the alleged violation of item number eight, which was clearly uh, public, publicized in a written manner in the media. Thank you.
Thank you. I find it extremely ironic that some members of this council so abruptly attack Councilmember Myers in a public forum, circumventing any code of conduct process that we may have. And perhaps even overlooking some of their own actions that may be considered violations of the code of conduct. I believe that this could have been handled in a better way. Avoid the significant distraction to council when we have so many important strategic issues facing the city right now. Having said that, I know that some on this council believe the information Councilmember Myers released was an egregious act. But there are many extenuating circumstances in this case. I personally spoke with Councilmember Myers, as I wish my fellow council members would have done prior to, to enacting this, 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 uh, this act. I believe that Councilmember Myers released the comment she did because she felt that the threats levied against the council by the parties involved in the Marina lease transfer were so significant and wrong that by not making this information public was in direct opposition to her fiduciary responsibility to the city. I can tell you that when I received those letters from our city attorney, I felt that the parties were making threats against public officials to act in a certain way. I was mad. Time to attack in a public forum was at the time these threats were made and not a council my, and council member Myers. I wish this was handled differently. I wish this council was cohesive enough to have open conversations and debates. But respect our different thoughts and I hope that we can move on from this without creating a public circus. And we have so many important issues to address. I'm not in favor of the hearing, but I agree that if this does goes forward, that we have to be define the process in the hearing as co- as defined by Councilmember Myers.
This is not an evidentiary hearing. All this is, is as Councilman, um, Streetman said, is whether or not we're going to have a hearing. The issue here is trust. It is whether or not council members can speak openly amongst themselves in executive session with our attorney without it being leaked. That's what the whole issue is. And we need to set boundaries and guidelines for people to do that. If you can run to the newspaper and release confidential information, then all is lost. We can't operate as a council because we can't have trust within each other. I'm not saying one way or other, whether or not at the end of the day, Councilman or Councilmember Myers has done anything inappropriate. I'm saying that there's an appearance and it has to be looked at. And that's all. And so I support us moving forward with a resolution. Thank you, Mayor.
My problem with this process is that we learned about the, that item on our agenda at the same time that y'all did. And I believe that it's such a serious matter to accuse one of our members of acting inappropriately, that there should have been some discussion among the council beforehand as to whether we could, we considered this important enough to bring to the public. So that's my concern with this, is the way it's been handled. If Councilmember Myers wants a public hearing, I won't stand in her way. But I am sorry that it's being handled in this way.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I agree wholeheartedly with, uh, Councilmember, uh, Anderson. I think that the notification process and the immediacy to which we go to this level is inappropriate and it's going to distract us from the business of the city. I will also support, um, Katie in her, um, hearing, if that's what she'd like. However, I have no idea how we can vote for something that is undefined. It is absolutely ridiculous in my opinion.
I would like to follow up on that and say that I truly don't believe that a hearing is in the best interest of the city. But because it has been stated that my actions are a flagrant and intentional violation of section eight. I don't see that we have any option. Thank you.
Councilmember Streetman.
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce.
Reluctantly, aye.
Councilmember Hahn.
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gosian.
Nay.
Councilmember Popson.
Aye.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Councilmember Myers.
Aye.
Mayor Pounds.
Aye.
Motion passes H1.
Thank you. So as defined in our code of conduct, it stays a member charged with conducting the conduct constituting a violation of the code of conduct. She'll be entitled to a public disciplinary hearing. Notice of such hearing shall be published in one or more newspapers of general circulation in the municipality at least one week in advance of the hearing. And Councilmember Myers, to your question, we'll absolutely answer and put the format in. It has not been done at this point because we just put in the code, code of conduct in April or March, I guess it was.
Who's, who's going to do that? It's kind of like, are you, are you going to do that?
City attorney will do that.
A city attorney is going to put the process together?
I, I.
No, no, I'm just, no, just a new.
Yeah.
Wouldn't council have to agree on the process?
Certainly can. I mean, this is a new char- uncharted territory.
I, I don't see any other way. The, the process has, the council passed the code. They left out the hearing process. So now we got to go back and develop and all agree on what that hearing process would be like before we can have a hearing.
And I, and I think that should be done by council. We have to decide what that is.
I would just recommend, as Ms. Myers stated, there is no process. Um, I would recommend city council discussing this item at your next meeting. Um, all agreeing who's going to represent the city. This is not going to be an issue that staff is going to be involved. This is a council issue. Um, and I think you all need to discuss that and agree and vote on whatever process you all want to move forward on it.
There. Yeah. So John, good, good comment.
And I just, I'd just like to note that this is all going to be in the public. This, it specifically states that it will be a public hearing. This will be public. I will have representation. And, um, we'll, we'll just have to go from there.
All right. So backing up on our agenda, uh, second reading of the two ordinances. We have received the latest edits to the latest round of amendments. Some minor wording changes, couple areas we need to finalize and hopefully we will not have to do that in executive session. There's a major change to the lease premises for Mr. Shooter, which we'll cover shortly. But to one of our residents' comments, make sure we're dealing with facts. Um, just by way of reminder, with all the amendments going back and forth, it is very easy to get lost. How with these amendments, the city's position is improved. And I would just like to highlight a couple of those here. So we have more lease security with the existing personal guarantee in place and now have an additional corporate guarantee in place with many more operational assets at their disposal. We have clarity on consumption. The amendments provide a regulated and supervised consumption area to the existing footprint where such consumption has been present for decades. We'll have a new option for residents and then the general public with the boat, with the boat club. We have a clearly defined mix of businesses. We have controls and threshold limits of expansion for all commercial activity, including boat club ensuring a balance and mix of businesses at the Marina. The shared and private lots will be coming back to the city, removing tenant control of managerial authority, which has been a source of conflict for a number of years and allows the city the opportunity to redesign with the restaurant team to benefit the restaurant, the residents, visitors and allows for a larger green space. Improve controls of, on future assignments and subletting that do not exist with the current lease. Allowances for operational improvements to improve dry storage capabilities that do not entail dry stack. And finally, controls on related party transactions that do not presently exist. The controls ensure the city receives 120% of fair market value rent for any such transactions through verifiable procedures. So those are just some of the areas where this amendment has, um, benefited the city in my opinion. So let's take the Marina outpost, which is the fourth amendment first. What I'd like to do is review the site plan, the parking plan and the conceptual proposed parking plan for the outpost, just to give everybody a a sense of what that looks like. So John, if you can put those on the screen, if you don't mind, we've got a few copies in the back for those that might like to, uh, take a look at those at a little bit closer level because they'll be hard to see on the screen. So this first one is for the outpost, the store essentially. So this, this is the lease premises. So just to get your bearings, uh, top of the page is the intercoastal waterway, right side's creek. Are there copies in the back or not? Sorry. Oh, sorry up here. If somebody would like some, sorry about that. So again, these are the lease premises as defined in the latest amendments. So you can see the store to the right of the store, the parking area, and then just in front of the store, the, um, gas pops. John, if you go to the parking plan, the next slide, if you don't mind.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
If you go back to the other, the parking, the parking has changed for the outpost.
It's been moved from right in front of the store to the right.
So it's a different portion, part of the lot.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
John, can you go to the one that looks like this? Multicolor. Thank you. That. So here's where the big lease premise change is, if you will, on the, on the latest amendment draft. So the blue, again, just to orient you is the Marina parking. These, these changes are actually in the Marina joint venture amendment, but it just seemed to make sense to talk about them here to some extent. So the shared lot, which is in purple on this particular page, Mr. Shooter had already agreed to get that back, whether you agree with that. Was his right or not to give that back to the city for our use. He has also now agreed to give back the private parking lot. The yellow lot, which is at the left-hand side of this particular piece. So you see that is going to give the city pretty significant parking area to work with the restaurant folks. Put in our green space, make sure we have resident trailer parking, golf cart parking, car parking and so on. John, if you'll go to.
Mr. Mayor, that, that diagram is not marked. As to what it's about. If you look back at it, there's nothing on it that says parking.
It says.
That's your legend, but there's no title on this except Isle of Palms Marina. Oh, there it is up at the very top, parking plan. Okay.
Question.
Jimmy.
I've heard some talk about. This new lot. Some language of. The. Restaurant is going to pay. The. Marina joint ventures, the. Or the, the new tenant. Um, somewhere between two hundred fifty and five hundred thousand dollars has also been. Talk of the city was gonna. Be covering half of that cost. Is it, is there any truth to all that?
Yeah, so as part of the existing restaurant lease that the city entered into in two thousand and twenty. There is an arrangement for the private parking lot. Where the restaurant is paying for the exclusive use of all, with the exception of aid parking spaces. And as part of those, as part of the restaurant lease negotiations, the city. Agreed to reimburse the restaurant for fifty percent of those expenses. Not exceeding thirteen thousand a year.
How much?
Thirteen thousand a year.
So it's not five hundred thousand?
Well, for the length, for the, for the entire. Life of the lease.
Life of the lease, but it's not five hundred thousand a year.
No.
Okay.
No, and.
Thirteen thousand.
Correct. If, if these changes go through and council approves them, that arrangement would go away. The restaurant would not need to pay for the exclusive use of any of those spaces, neither would the city.
If you were to. Look into the future, out of what bucket, where, where would this money come from? Would, would it probably come from hospitality tax that? Or accommodations tax? It wouldn't be if coming from. Real property taxes, right?
No, the arrangement and the way that is spelled out in the restaurant lease. Is that when this, the restaurant pays the city rent. It has the ability to deduct up to thirteen thousand dollars a year for that purpose.
Okay. So that would come strictly from the restaurant?
It would come as a reimbursement.
Thirteen thousand.
That's right.
Just to clarify as well on that, on that lease, that yellow section for parking cannot be. Utilized for residents unless there's an agreement with the marine, the marine restaurant. In order to change their parking. That right now is, is for employee parking for the restaurant.
In the valet.
Yeah, yeah. So there has to be another agreement with the restaurant group on changing the whole parking plan there in order for that to be utilized for resident parking.
Right.
And the reason that wasn't in the original lease, that particular. Uh, space was because. That was operated by another commercial venture. Uh, name of it that was maintained incorporated. And they had a separate lease with the city. So that part of it was, was not part of the original lease.
That, that was actually shared among the tenants. Both the yellow and the orange. Were labeled as shared among the tenants. There was no differentiation. They were both in the same color and shared among the tenants.
I think you meant purple.
Yellow and purple, right, Katie, in this?
I'm sorry.
Originally. Yeah, back in the nineteen.
And I'm not colored.
Yeah, that was, it was late nineteen hundreds.
But the, the lease that we, the, the exists, the existing lease. With MJV that we, the cur- city currently holds. States that that area, both of those areas are shared among the tenants. The restaurant has a separate lease with MJV because they were. Afraid that they were going to open and they weren't going to have anywhere for their employees to park because Mr. Clark had expressed those concerns back in the old restaurant days. But those two areas were shared among the tenants, just to clarify. Thank you.
Recently.
Current, currently.
Like recently, that's what I said.
Yeah, yeah.
This is the Marina side of the parking, so a complete redesign. Much more efficient. Use of space from what shooters. Engineers, which is the same engineer the city and the restaurant folks have been using to make sure we have a, a good cohesive plan. So you'll see, it's hard to see with all the lines flying across, but. The red on the left-hand side, just to orient you, is Forty First Avenue. Coming into the Marina. Shooters has about thirteen. Trailer parking spots identified at this point. There'll be a first come, first served, but residents will be free in those particular ones. The next agenda item we'll look at. Between the city and the. Restaurant side of the house will show some more rest, uh, trailer parking for resident only at that point.
What is the gray color indicating?
That's, that's just the survey.
Survey of the property.
Yeah. So.
Where's the property lines? Where are the property lines stopped?
The gray is parking surface to drive. The darker gray.
Yes.
Parking.
Are you asking the leased space?
Uh, yeah, is this, I mean, is my understanding that the ci- the city still. Owns and maintains or, well, whoever owns and maintains. Forty, forty-one is not part of the lease premises.
That is correct.
But the, all of the gray flowing in and out of each other makes that a little confusing.
So, let's go to the next slide, which I.
Can you hold back though? I think one, one change that just should be noted, and Douglas, I don't know if you know what the actual area is, but by now drawing the lines. Completely surrounding the footprint. We have relinquished as a, as a city, all of the ingress and egress roads, which were part of the city. They were not part of the lease premises. So now we've made this a contiguous. Rental, rentable premise. We have given up, I don't know, Douglas, is this an acre, half acre of dirt that now is being conveyed over to the control of the, of the tenant? So we no longer control. That ingress and egress. And since these are only conceptual drawings, the tenant, the new tenant will have freedom to basically densify or do whatever they want with that new. S- the new, new space. So there may be twelve trailers there today, but the language says that it's really up to them on where they designate trailer spaces. Or if they designate trailer spaces. So we just need to know as residents that we are relinquishing the control of the entire footprint now. So densification and use of that is going to be entirely up to the tenant and not up to us as the owners.
Well, um, just to one point.
Sure.
And, um, and I hope that we go through.
We know how much land that is, by the way, Douglas. Okay.
I hope that we go through everything that has been returned to the city from Mr. Schuler, the changes to the, to the document. But included in there, it's there, he is requesting approval of this site plan. So if you all approve, this would be the site plan that would be implemented in his area. Um, and just to, you know, to clarify what Ms. Myers was saying, the road between Forty First, between. The end of Waterway, all the way to essentially where it ends, it is city property. The twenty-five parking spaces that are shown next to the red line. That, that is conceptual. That is something that the city would be able to do in about a year or two. When we move forward with the Forty First Avenue downfall project, we've received a grant. Amendment of about eight hundred thousand dollars, seven hundred and sixty to pipe that ditch. So those spaces would not be able to be done until that project is completed, even though they're listed there conceptually. It could be parking, it could be green space, it could be. Parallel trailer parking, that's going to be up to the city. This is just conceptual of what, what that space once piped could accommodate.
I'd like to say some things too, that first of all. There was, in the original site plan, there were. Parcels of land that were, that were in the Marina lease that are now. United with, by. Including the roads as well into the plan. Um, although we are giving something, apparently to the Marina leaseholder. In return. It, this will be a much more efficient operation out there where the, where the owner will actually be, or the leasehold will be able to, to operate efficiently. And I think we will all appreciate it more. The parking. You will see that the parking for the outpost is now. Um, along the waterway rather than. Next to the store. The, the area. That, it looks like a little fish hook that's in the, right next to the store is actually where the fuel pumps are now. They will be with that arrangement, the flow will be better. The pumps will be protected from being, you know, liable to being hit or something out there. The children's playground has been removed from the center of the parking lot. And it could be replaced in front of the store if it needs to, which again is another benefit. The. Angle parking that we're talking about for trailers that would, that. Schuler has offered for use by residents on a first come, first served basis will be along. The boat ramp, a road in the back. So that's how many spaces? I think it's about a dozen or so.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Those would be on a first come, first served basis, but there are additional ones we'll talk about later. For exclusive use of the residents. So. I think we gained. A lot by this layout and it sort of gives you an idea of how. The operation with the new leaseholder would work. With part of the area being for. Storage and stacking and part of it with enough sufficient parking for his business as well. So I do. Although it is a change, significant change from, from what we had before in terms of the layout. I, I think it's going to be, well, you. Function very well.
John.
Well, I, I don't understand what he's doing with the space. He talks about, I mean, twelve spaces for boat trailers seems like it's very, very. It's not enough. I mean. There's, there's, I don't know how many is out there now, but probably three times that. And I don't know what all these areas mean. He talked about storage of boats and if he should be here to describe, plan, telling us what this is about, or somebody should be telling us what his plan is. Instead of us looking at a drawing with a bunch of white, black lines and gray on it. I, I can't tell what he plans on doing with this.
Okay, there are additional.
Private. Speak for him, Jamie, because you don't.
Yeah, John, can you go back to that slide?
Is there a key?
Sorry, Jimmy.
So that, I'll hear some concern from citizens that there won't be any room for residents to park their boat trailers. Is, is this addressing that problem? Is, or? Are we okay?
Yeah, I think so. Again, right now there's thirteen listed there. When we get to the deck, next agenda item where we're working with the restaurant. To redesign that whole top part of the intercoastal waterway parking, there's probably going to be at least another five to ten trailer parking spots that'll be exclusively dedicated to residents.
In addition to the thirteen?
Correct. So, you know, what's the magic number? Don't know, it's hard, hard to say.
But there will be. Boat trailer parking exclusively for residents. Absolutely.
Absolutely.
But the thirteen are not exclusively for residents. The thirteen, the, I want to make clear, the thirteen are for anybody that comes there. If residents have to get one of those, they can get one.
Correct.
But there's thirteen total for everybody bringing their boats down there on Saturday. Plus what?
Plus another five to ten, that's city will have in its exclusive lot at the top.
If they arrange something with the marine.
Okay, but the leaseholder also has trailer boat storage within the Marina lease area.
Right, which is kind of the hairy bone.
The hairy bone pattern there. I think they're about twenty-five or so.
Twenty-eight.
For his, twenty-eight for his private use.
Twenty-eight plus twelve plus five.
Okay.
This is why we need him here.
Can I just read a, it'll take two seconds here. Let me just read right from the contract. It says, I O P residents shall not be prohibited from parking trailers used to launch boats via the boat ramp. In those portions of the exclusive parking lot, which, and it said shall be, that got struck. And now says are designated and operated for the parking of trailers by users of the boat ramp as determined by tenant in its sole and absolute discretion. So I, I, excuse me. I, I'm just saying, I go by, I go by words in a contract. The drawings are conceptual, they're labeled as such. We need to understand what the contract could be, not what we want it to be. That's my advice.
Other questions, comments?
I, I just have one, one comment that I wanted to alert you all. On section seven alterations to the exclusive parking lot, I'm looking at the red line for. The Sixth Amendment. And I think this was to Councilmember Pierce's point about ingress and egress. Subsection A says, under no circumstance shall such reconfiguration, referring to the exclusive parking lot. Alteration, addition, or improvement of the exclusive parking lot. Impede or preclude pedestrian and vehicular access, ingress and egress to and from the Marina and Forty First Avenue. Hope, I, I don't know if that answers the question, just wanted to.
All my point was, whether it's going to be more efficient or not, is that we, we relinquish total control over the configuration. That's all. So the Ben, yeah.
John, if you can go to one more slide, oh, yeah, yeah, this one. It's the lease premises for the Marina, is how it's titled. So. Again, this will be covered under the MJV lease, but this is the least premises for the Marina. Again, just to orient you, top is intercoastal waterway, restaurant at the top middle. Ship store kind of in the middle, bottom right.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
It sounds like to me that Mr. Pierce is, is stating that. All of, all of this, all of this could all change at the discretion of the tenant.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I'm saying that.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
All of it, everything that we've talked about, everything we've worked on. Everything that's in this deal is worth nothing?
What the document says in the exhibit, it is clearly labeled, Mr. Councilman Ward, at the very top in the left-hand corner, that these are all conceptual drawings subject to change. And it, and that language in the amendment on section four in the exhibit says, as determined by tenant in its sole and absolute discretion. And that's, that's the legal definition.
So it's your fear that. There will be no parking at all for any residents?
It's not a, it's not a fear, it's a, it's a.
Is that your thought?
It's a, it's a, it's an option for the tenant to do anything they want within the bounds of that. The business model, as I understand it, is storage and boat club. They do not, the, the new tenants, and right or wrong, I have nothing against Mr. Schuler's business model, has nothing to do with parking a boat. Ramp or boat, um, trailers. That, in my opinion, one boat trailer takes up two storage spots. A storage spot can be a thousand dollars a month, twelve months out of the year. A boat launch would be twenty bucks a day. Seasonally. What would you do?
I believe Mr. Schuler has even made those.
And, and yes, and he has made those comments to me as well. I mean, it's a.
Maybe executive session, but he has made.
So he, he turned down, you know, he. He turned down the requirement and he has explicitly put in the contract and whoever's at our table, and I don't know who's at our table. Has accepted these terms and conditions. And I don't, that's why, you know, I agree, Mr. Ward, you had suggested that we get a Marina consultant. I am all for that. I've been for that since day one to get Marina consultant at the table. This. Offers the new tenant the ability to be able to do whatever they want for the next twenty-three years within their lease space. That's what, that's what this says.
Councilman Pierce, isn't that what the existing lease says?
No.
Why is it in the amendment? It's in the existing lease, why is it in the amendment?
One, one, we, one, they didn't have all, the existing tenant did not have all the dirt. Number two, they had to come to us for anything that had a hundred thousand cumulative changes. And we can go on and on in the existing lease, which is why I am a proponent and have a proponent of it as is transfer. We have a brand new lease here.
Well, I would have to say that initially. When this was presented back in April. We definitely were talking about an as-is, and we were offered by Schuler to. That he would just say, okay, I'm going to give the resident parking capabilities back to the city. I thought that was a win. Right there, we immediately had access to free citizen parking. And we were willing to go ahead and. Do this deal as is, and he was just offered the parking. Since then, we decided to get cute with it and we decided to make all these amendments and we now are on the eleventh, twelfth, or thirteenth iteration. Because we decided that we wanted to do all these changes. And now we're in a situation here where we're getting bogged down on all of this in the weeds, in my opinion. I, I, I think at some point you got to say, in good faith, and I understand that we got to have, we feel like we got to have Ts crossed, Is dotted, but at some point. Please. No comments here. At some point. You know, you've got to say, we have got to trust that this potential new. You know, you've got to say, we have got to trust that this potential new tenant is going to do the right thing by the residents. And have some accountability.
Yeah, folks, can we hold your comments and catch?
And it just, to me, it's just, it, it seems to me that we, we have it, we have a. We have a strategy here to just keep delaying this, delay, 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 delay to one end. I mean, I for one, I'm ready to call the question on this at any point and say, let's have a vote on it and go and move ahead. So.
Mr. Streamman, what can I, can I just ask one or have one thing? I, no, I, all I would like to say, um, Councilman Streamman is, I was initially for dotting some Is, crossing some Ts. And doing some modifications to the exhibits. I was one of the ones that said this is going to be probably an opportunity for us to clean up a few things before we did it. That was in April. April twenty-sixth is when we got notified. We went through one cycle and it was, I don't think any of us in our wildest dreams. Thought that the bad lease could get worse. It's gotten every iteration. Probably on iteration four, my advice was stop sending it over because every time it came back, we lost ground, in my opinion. So I, I agree with you, Councilman Streamman, but I still think that it's not about dotting Is and crossing Ts. The valuation of this asset now under this new operating model is increased by millions and millions of dollars. And we have conveyed that value over to the new tenant. And in my opinion, my sole opinion, the consideration we've received for that is zero. So I would like to, you know, I still think it's one of those things and I don't fault Mr. Schuler. He's done a fantastic job for his side of the table and I said that to him. So I, I just think we should protect our asset as best we can and I would try to revert back to where we started from.
Councilman Streamman, I'd like to know when you say we have been making all these changes, I, I'd like to know who the we is that you're talking about. Because it seems to me that every time that there have been amendments to this document. It's been Mr. Schuler who's been adding things and we as the city have been giving them up. So we as a city haven't been messing around and wasting our time. We have been listening to and sadly accepting all of his, as in Mr. Schuler. Changes. So. That your, your use of the word we is a little bit confusing there.
Well, Mr. Mayor, as rebuttal with that, that's not true. That's not accurate at all. It's not been one-sided. It's been back and forth between the two parties on and on and on. And it's been through attorneys and iterations and different things that have been going on. We have all had a hand in this since we. Refused initially to do an as-is and also accept that he was willing to give over free resident parking. This, in my opinion, is a win for the residents. And again. When can I make a motion to call for the question?
I'd just like to say the we.
John.
Just one.
I just think we need to stop the madness. Um, someone once told me that when you're in a hole, stop digging. I think we're in a hole. I've heard that on this council from many of you, including Councilman Streetman just reiterated or. Councilman Khan say that we are only obligated and should have only considered transferring the leases as is. I think we, we all thought that we could get an amendment quickly, but this has gone downhill. Uh, pretty fast since we started this thing. I think we should consider the transfer as is. Uh, do as what Councilman Ward suggested and post-transfer hire a consultant. That is specializes in marinas and commercial property to help guide us through the process of these amendments. We're way too backed up with this right now. We should do, as one of our residents suggested. Inform a Marina Advisory Board that can help guide what the residents want the Marina to look like and work with new. Uh, tenant to do it. Uh, I don't know the process here. You know, Councilman, uh, Streetman mentioned, when is time to make a motion? I would like to make a motion and I'd like to move this forward. But I would like to make a motion, uh.
On order, we have a motion in a second, right? We do not.
I, I would like to propose we make a motion to approve the assignment of the Marina outpost lease as is to Morgan Creek Marina. And additionally, the same motion to approve the assignment of the Marina lease as is to Morgan.
I second that motion.
The former discussion, I'm sorry that it's out of, out of order right now, but I'd just like to say that. The we of city council is we act as a body. And even though I may not agree with everything that some of the people say, as a member of the council. We act as a body. So when we agree to things, we all take that responsibility. So please, can we talk as a unit rather than as individuals?
I apologize if I can clarify, I did not mean that we were not acting as a body. I meant the fact that most all changes have come from. Mr. Schuler, not from this side of the table in the negotiations. Now granted. Unfortunately. I haven't seen. All of the back and forth. I have asked to be shared, for that to be shared multiple times and haven't seen it. So that, that is still a question, but, but I believe that almost all of the changes and a lot of the waiting around has been us waiting around. For Mr. Schuler's changes and amendments.
So if we vote as is, free resident parking goes away, free boat launch goes away. Um, free trailer parking resident goes away. And the restaurant folks are going to have to continue to deal with the new tenant for the shared parking lot.
No.
Yes, it is. It's as is.
I, I said that we would, at post-transfer, we would then work to, 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 to get the amendments. And those things that they've already agreed on, but it's not saying that that will never happen. And the other, the other thing is, is that there's, and there's a debate, and I think Councilman Han said at one point that. There's not a, there's, we could potentially do exactly what we're doing now without any changes to any leases. We have the authority and within the city and within that property to change the parking the way that it's proposed right now. And that's a debate for a later day, but to answer your point. Uh, I, I, I don't think it's a, it, it's, will never happen. And I'm not saying that, but with the, the pace that we're going now. I feel like it was a huge mistake and we're going to get things, there's unintended consequences that are going to be created from passing this amendment the way they are.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
What makes you think he's going to come back to the table and negotiate with us after we give him an as-is lease? He has, he has no, he has no need to come back to negotiate with us. He can keep saying, no, 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 no. He's, he's, he will, he will have Brian Barrigan's lease that nobody likes, that nobody likes.
That's what he purchased.
Yeah, but do we want that?
But he's.
Yeah, right now we do want that.
I want, I want resident parking and resident free boat launch and resident boat trailer parking. And I want the restaurant to have the ability to get more parking spaces. And I think under these amendments, the residents win, the restaurant gets a better opportunity for more parking and we get free launch.
I'd like to suspend the rules of, to make a motion to suspend the rules of order, to let the restaurant tell us what they think instead of us trying to put words in their mouth.
Your motion, nope. You can make. Katie, Katie, make the motion.
Make a motion to suspend the rules of order to allow the restaurant group to speak instead of putting words in their mouth. And let me point out that back when we did have committees. The real, the restaurant and both Marina tenants were invited to speak at every single real property committee.
But never did. Most.
For a second.
A second. And let's just be really clear on who's been negotiating and the back and forth. You know, it hasn't been twelve versions back from the shooter and team. I mean, our staff and city attorney has been acting on what this body has told them to do and we have. Thrown back as many edits as they've thrown back our way. So there's not Mr. Howerson, there's not Mr. Gozo. There's not Mr. Mayor doing anything that is not agreed upon by this body that has been backing from amendments. To shooters team that, that has not happened. Nobody's negotiating on our behalf. Our staff and. City attorney are acting out on our wishes and that was, I didn't mean to leave you out of that.
Yeah, at the last, uh, at the special meeting that council had on the, on the eighth, I believe, when, uh. The group council voted on certain amendments, those were sent back to Mr. Schuler and his attorney to being. Um, approved based on the votes that council took at that meeting. Uh, because of the, um, new conversations regarding the changes to the parking plan. Uh, we were expecting some changes from Mr. Schuler that would reflect that. Um, but the changes that were received. By us on Friday were the ones that were sent to council via the packet, uh, that same day. There was nothing that the city added after that. The only additions came and were reflected by the votes of council at that special council meeting. Everything else that's shown as a red line are additions from Mr. Schuler, not the city.
Thank you. Can I, can I make, can I make a?
John, can you just put the camera back on to hear? You don't mind, please, just so folks at home can. Katie, go ahead, sorry.
So if, if anybody wants to look back over minutes and, and, uh, meetings, uh, you will, and, and amendments. You will see that the, um. Amendments contained an allowance for onsite alcohol consumption long before. That vote was taken, I believe the vote was taken in July and the amendments contain that long before. So you might want to ask yourself how that got into amendments.
So there's a vote on or a motion. Can we vote?
I have a question. I thought we went through this process before, we had like thirteen amendments and we. We voted them down, the body is all voted them down, they weren't unanimous, but. It seems like we're circling back around if we say, well, we're just going to do it as is. It's stuff that we have already rehashed and rehashed and rehashed over the past six months.
We, I don't understand how we go forward with the amendments when they came back completely marked up. They're not even close. To what we agreed to at the last council meeting. So now we want to do a second reading and approve something that's all marked up. We have no, we don't have an understanding of what he submitted in his parking. We don't know what he, what he means by some of the changes that he done. We've not had a chance to review with our legal counsel, but everybody's ready to go forward without any kind of discussion on the changes. He keeps adding and editing the amendments, the things that we put forward and we voted on them. Two of them, I don't think are even in the agreement that we, he rejected them. I mean, we're going backwards. We need to stop the madness, put a stake in the ground saying, we'll prove these leases as is. And we're open to continuing these discussions post-transfer and when we can get some expertise under. With advising us on how we move forward with this. Right now, this is madness.
So John, what if we walk through these? What if we walk through the changes that are sitting in front of us today first?
And then what? And we don't agree and then we send that back to him again? And then we have another, the thirteenth iteration that we come here. Mr. Mayor, I just don't think this process is working. We need to stop it. It is not working. The only one benefiting from this, I think, is the potential new tenant. We're certainly not, the residents certainly aren't. Every single time there's a new change that negatively impacts the city. I understand what you're saying about the parking. I'm not willing to concede the parking for this agreement. I think we can get there eventually. I think we have the right to do some of the things that we, that we, we have proposed here. That's a debate for a different day. We need to stop this madness and do our, what we're supposed to do, what everybody said our obligation is. And that is to transfer these leases as is. If Mr. Schuler doesn't want the lease as is anymore, that's fine, we'll move on. But that's our obligation and we should move forward with that.
Well, talk about moving backwards. If we vote as is, we're moving back to square one, so I'm not in favor of that. I, I, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Mayor, can we vote on that as to whether we, uh, yeah, are going to do as is or not?
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to complicate things, but just procedurally, um, your vote to do an assist transfer. Would require legal to draft a new ordinance. That would then have to be brought before city council for a first and second reading because all amendments.
It's merely direction of staff and council.
That's correct. If y'all vote, we can go back and I can instruct council to draft that ordinance that would need to be. You know, would be presented to you all as well and that would need to be approved. Uh, because. You know, the agenda does not have any ordinance to take action on a, as his assignment. That's just the only reason. The ones that are listed are the ones that are being debated.
Agreed. John, that makes sense to you. I mean, this is, this is just direction.
Or we could have a, or, or we can have a first reading, can't we? This would be first reading? Whatever, whatever the process needs to be, you need to pass the lease as is.
What are we?
Can I, sorry, one question before that? Can I ask a question? Um. I believe there was one due diligence item that we were s- waiting on that we were told we were going to get and then maybe I missed it. I don't know that we've gotten it yet.
Hey, John, I'm sorry. Can you make sure the camera's on for, it is okay, just not here. Okay, thank you. I don't need to see myself, I'm just making sure.
We have not received anything additional to what you've already received from Mr. Schula.
Was it, weren't we waiting on one thing?
There was an item that are, that Mr. Kids recommended and suggested that, um, be provided. But I have not received.
And what was that item again, Bezra? I think it was the, wasn't it the affidavit representing that they actually? Yeah.
You're hesitant to say because it's, uh, privileged or?
I, I, I don't, um. I would have, I don't have the list in front of me and I know there were nine items and it was one of the nine.
It was an affidavit that, that, um, from his attorney. Uh, saying that they are the actual beneficial owners and have the authority to sign on the deal.
That is correct.
And we don't have that yet. And again, you want to. Can we, can we just finish that discussion, Mr. Mayor? Yeah, so I, we confirm, we do not have the affidavit to represent who the owners are or that they have the right to. To convey that.
We, that's correct. We do not have that. Um, city attorney just stated that they indicated that that would be provided to the city upon their closing.
So can we, can we, can we state exactly who we are doing business with?
According to the documents provided by Mr. Schuler, um, controlling.
The, the entity, not the owners.
Correct. It would be, um, Said Hamam and Schuler, Michael Schuler, as the managing partners of Ma- uh, Morgan Creek LLC.
And I. It, it was my understanding that that document was forthcoming and it very well could just be that it's got. Benefit of the doubt, but it's just gotten lost in the shuffle. Can I make a friendly amendment that says that we would vote on? Original transaction with.
Contingent upon.
Contingent upon receiving that document.
Yeah, you can do, you can do that a friend, as a friendly amendment if there's no. No issue and people will accept that you, y'all don't have to vote on that amendment.
But would you put friendly language into something when we're voting as is on, you know, I mean, this is, we're, we're talking about going back to the. Original premise that we're just going to accept an as-is lease and starting over.
I think the request to have a friendly amendment is just that, um, to the motion that you have in front of you to vote for an assist assignment. If there is no issue with the rest of the members to include a, that, that, that that vote is contingent upon receiving this. Letter from Mr. Schuler's attorney, um, you can include that as part of the motion without having to actually vote on that as an amendment. It's just a simple, simple way of adding language to an existing motion on the table.
I'm sorry.
You're the one who seconded.
It's a two second.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Is everybody clear on that? I can, I see some faces.
Stick to motion, please.
Voting on an as-is amendment, excuse me, as-is lease. With contention upon the receipt of that due diligence item and I didn't catch what you called that because.
Affidavit of ownership.
Affidavit of ownership, contention upon the receipt of an affidavit of ownership.
And this is on both the Marina and the. And the outpost, it's on both items.
I, I believe it might just be a letter from the attorney. I, I don't know if it's in the form of an affidavit.
It was a representation letter.
Go.
Point of voter order, what happens to the other ordinance?
Never got a motion. Or second.
Okay, so it's just.
I thought it was, but it wasn't.
Well, the city attorney serves as the parliamentarian. I mean, if there are any questions, procedural questions about that and. Whether or not I, he's, he's saying to me that y'all can't really take action on that motion because it's not on the. Whether or not I, he's, he's saying to me that y'all can't really take action on that motion because it's not on the agenda there. So I would defer on him as a parliamentarian. Um, I think that directional, sometimes council does to make, take motions and take those. To provide direction to staff, obviously it wouldn't be a final vote. Because it has to be done by ordinance, that has to be drafted, like I said, um. But I would defer on.
Let's take a roll call if that's okay.
Direction, defer meaning what?
Well, if, if you all want advice, you can certainly get advice at this point.
We need to pay attention to the attorney.
Right now, there's, there, there can't be a vote without the ordinance. For to do a additive assignment that's not on your agenda, you can do that, you just can't do it here. You would, you need to give direction to us to change the uh lease, which would be a very material alteration. To the lease, answer the ordinance, we could come back here, if that's what you all want to do. We can't do it right now. You can vote on the second amend, second uh reading. For what's on the agenda. Um, but to do a wholesale change would require a first reading. A whole new draft of what you are proposing. If that's what you wanted, give staff direction to do, it can't be done, it just cannot be done right now.
We have on the agenda item, the assignment of the Marina outpost lease and the assignment of the joint, Marina joint ventures lease. I mean. I'm, I'm confused as to why we can't just alter that since it's the same topic and same agenda to be able to make the motion.
Cause it's got an ordinance in front of it.
It would be a material uh change to the whole thing, which would basically be restarting the process.
I thought the amendments were not supposed to be material changes to the original lease.
Well, what, what we received.
You say we can't take any action then? Yeah, we need to vote up or down second reading, and if it fails, then we can give, then we give.
Direction, we have to vote, right?
I, I, I'm, I think people who are watching online are not going to understand. Because we're. I'm sorry, but everybody's talking over each other and I, I, I fear that we're, we're going to miss something. So I know the Mr. Khan was saying something.
I was just saying, I, as I understand it, we vote up or down the second uh reading. If it fails, then we can consider whether or not to transfer as is.
No, you also, you can postpone. Are you talking about what you can do, what you can't do? You can vote up or down or you can postpone.
I'm, I'm, so we can't vote on John's motion, is that what we're saying?
That's correct.
To give staff direction.
Can the motion be directional? Well.
We have to vote though, right?
Well. I, I can implement policy that's voted on by council. I cannot, you know, just pick and choose. You know, who's saying what, you know, I think that a vote is what represents where you all stand on the issue. And gives us direction about what we need to do.
I'd like to make a motion and postpone second reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash five and four.
Okay, there's already a motion on the floor that needs to be removed.
I have, I just, I have, I'm still trying to understand this. So. We could vote, in theory, we could vote on Councilmember Bogosian's. Motion to give direction to draft the ordinance and then. We could vote on Councilmember Ward's. Motion to postpone, correct?
So I guess the, the conundrum here is that I, I, I think that you can vote. On a directional motion, but what I'm hearing from the city attorney is that it would not be appropriate to do so.
You can do it either way. I don't think it matters.
Okay.
But, but, but it's clear though, that you cannot take a vote tonight on.
Right, right, oh, right.
We got it.
Yeah. That's, but that is a motion though.
That is the motion, it's the motion would have to be reworded, right?
To just give direction to staff.
Yeah, right. Is that John, I mean?
Change it then, if that's what we have to do to give direction. I said, change the motion to uh give direction to staff to draft an ordinance. That would transfer the lease, uh both leases as is to Marina, to uh Morgan Creek LLC. With her uh friendly amendment.
And I'll second that.
So another motion already on the table? That was.
And then after that, Mister Councilman Ward's.
I think that was a correction that he, he reworded his motion. Well, we had to deal with this first. So we reworded his, he seconded it.
Yeah, re- restate the motion that's in front of us. She can't.
Okay, I will try. Your mi- Mister um Councilmember Bogosian's motion is to give direction to staff to draft an ordinance. That would assign the Marina outpost and the Marina joint ventures lease. To Morgan Creek LLC as is contingent upon receiving the letter from Mr. Schuler's attorney. Confirming.
Beneficial ownership.
The, the beneficial ownership of, of their organization, which is the final, one of the pieces of the due diligence request.
That's it.
Is that it?
I'm going to second it again.
No, but she can vote first, Councilmember Pierce.
I.
Councilmember Myers.
I.
Councilmember Popson.
Nay.
Councilmember Streetman.
Nay.
Councilmember Ward.
Nay.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilor Bogosian.
Aye.
Councilmember Han.
Nay.
Mayor Pounds.
Nay.
Motion fails.
Okay, so we're back.
Back to Mister Ward.
Mister Ward's.
Yeah, um. I, this is a procedural vote. To me, it's uh. That's all I have to say about it. It's, I made the motion just for a procedure. Okay, so I'm fine, it's up to uh. City clerk.
What did we do?
What was your motion?
The motion was to postpone.
Yes. Postpone the vote on twenty-two oh five and twenty-two oh four, correct?
I'll second that.
What are we postponing? Because it's on the agenda.
Cause it's on the agenda. You need to take action or you need to postpone. It's on the agenda, you gotta do something with it.
Okay, and do you want to attach a date to that?
Leave that to staff and attorney.
No, well, no, I, I think, I'm so, uh respectfully, um, I.
All right, how about the regular council meeting in two weeks?
At your next regular meeting?
Yeah.
Is that part of your motion?
For what purpose? Why are we postponing?
This is just procedural. Is why I want, I want to vote on this thing tonight. And I want it to be very clear that we exercise, that council had a, had a voice in every option. What we could legally did, either vote yes, no, or postpone. And I want it to be, so everything was out in the open and we all knew what we were voting on. It's a procedural vote in my mind. I'm not in favor.
I, I, okay, I, so I, I don't.
Can we have a discussion? I think we have a discussion.
Why you want to postpone it? You want to postpone because you want to consider the, the existing amendments as written? You need time to do that? Is that your, is that the point?
It's either you vote yes, no, or you postpone.
Yes, sir, I understand that.
I want to make sure that the option to postpone is available to the council. That the option of the postponement is available to the council. That's all. It doesn't mean I'm in.
May I offer a reason why we might want to postpone for two weeks?
Of course.
May, perhaps that would give time for the restaurant who's, we're going to be a topic for the next agenda. And for Mr. Schuler and for the city to reconcile the parking plan. There's, and the uh, we had originally, I had originally met with Mayor Pounds. And requested that we um have second reading for all of the agreements at the same time, so that all documents would be reconciled. Everybody, the tenants and the city would be in full agreement. Everybody's on board, get everybody in the room at the same time. And so all the documents were synchronized so that we don't have any layover or any risk of modification after one lease gets signed and another one does not. I know that there are some issues already with the submission from the restaurant that need to be ironed out. I think that would warrant a meeting, hopefully with the staff or other folks within the city. It'll give us time to get all the heat and down and the reconciliation done between all of the tenants. So that we don't have any overhang and can execute all these documents at once. Or at least get a lot closer to that. My request was apparently denied. Uh, there were some differences with what's going on with the documents and reasons why we did not have our first reason. Reading tonight for the restaurant. Um, I think those could be ironed out over the next two weeks and we could all be in a better place.
So my question is, where do we stand with the? With the lease, the versions of the lease that we got to review this week?
Your motion on the table is to defer that.
So we're not going to review it tonight?
But this motion passes.
Otherwise, if it doesn't pass, we can review them tonight and then we would have, we've had the opportunity of a vote or we could still postpone the vote.
Procedurally, you can, you can still discuss them today, even if you all vote to defer action until.
Yeah.
The next meeting.
To postpone.
Postpone action until the next meeting. Or you can just have the discussion at that time. That's up to you all.
I'd like to postpone and review the. The latest changes that were said to us by Schuler.
Give us some time. I'm sorry, to give us some, give us some ample time to review the documents.
I think Jay is saying the opposite, right?
Yeah, I'm saying let's, I agree that we should postpone the vote on the, the second vote on the ordinance. However, proceed with reviewing what we've received so far tonight. Okay, good, okay.
It's on both of them, right?
Yes.
All right.
Councilmember Ward.
No.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilor Bogosian.
Aye.
Councilmember Han.
Nay.
Councilmember Streetman.
Nay.
Councilmember Popson.
Nay.
Councilmember Myers.
I.
Councilwoman Pierce.
Aye.
Mayor Pounds.
Nay.
Motion fails.
It's a desire or bring from, we want to walk through the changes that we have in front of us on which is current amendments.
Let's put a motion on the table first. But I, I, I would move that we. Move that we vote on both the amendments and the second read, reading on both amendments to approve.
I second.
But I don't think it's to do that. It's gonna just have to say motion to approve and then we start talking about.
There you go, motion.
As simple as that.
Uh, before you all entertain a motion, you also received. Um, I can't.
Yeah, hey folks, can you take your conversation outside of?
You, on your agenda, you have also received proposed amendments from marker one-one-six, the restaurant folks. Um, some of those um uh requi- requests or amendments would. Alter the Marina store lease particularly. So they've requested and um asked whether or not that could be discussed, that would be discussed first before. Uh, taking action, as it seems like you all will be taking action tonight on the two ordinances. I just want to alert that there might be changes that you may want to discuss or consider. Regarding the request from the restaurant that would impact, potentially impact the Marina store lease.
This item C on the agenda.
That is correct.
That would most likely need to be done in executive session to walk through their amendment.
I believe that's what they would like.
Do we need to spin rules of order?
Yeah, I, I would recommend, you can go ahead.
Walk that way, but let me make sure we get the right motion.
You all can consider a, a reorder of the agenda so that you can take up action, um item, item C under purpose.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed. John, it's uh that much. Sure, please. And John, so let us get it on the screen real quick, just for folks at home.
Mister Mayor, where are the other two options that we have seen?
This is the option on the table.
There's another.
Get an extra. Here you go, John. Thank you, Mister Bush now. Yes, yes.
Thank you. So the purpose of this is to discuss how the uh entire site would flow together as one. Currently, it's, it's very confusing. There's a lot of conflict down there because of design issues, because of signage. Because of layout has led to a lot of uh ongoing issues. This site plan, we are hoping will resolve uh the pattern and the flow and have clear delineation of which. Parking is for which purpose. So there's no more confusion over the term shared, which has never been defined in. Is a continued source of issues for residents, for the restaurant group, for the Marina side. So the reason I wanted to bring this up is there's a lot going on on this site. Um, not only are there a lot of businesses. More importantly, there's a lot of uses. There's boat trailers, there's boat ramps, there's children, there's bikes, there's pedestrians. There's automobiles, there's golf carts. And what a lot of you don't see is there's eighteen wheeler trucks that have to come in every morning to multiple sites on the property. So there's, like I said, a lot of moving parts and the eighteen wheelers are critical because you can't cut this up. As much as you think, when you have to have these wide turning radiuses. So I'm not a civil engineer, but I've spent a lot of time with the civil engineers and learned a lot in the last uh year. And what he has done, I think, is the best layout possible with the site that we have. With the demands on the site. So this is not a legal discussion, it is just a traffic flow discussion. So as you look down here at the bottom left, you'll see the entrance on forty-one, Forty-first Avenue. And currently, at this corner, it stops into a runway. Sorry, at this corner. Which means all of the traffic flow has to travel through the MJB side into the restaurant. Into shared parking or up into the current employee lot. The benefit of this design is to open up two-way traffic farther down into the property. In this area. So that we now have specific resident-only or resident-controlled parking areas. Which is basically the entire blue left side. Go on here, all the way to this corner, all the way up to the public dock, and all the way down on that side. Along the current ditch or outflow. In addition to that, we would have a twenty-foot green space that would go from the Forty First Outflow all the way to the uh existing edge of the dock. That would be public space controlled uh by the public.
Hey, John, just for clarity, the dock meaning the T dock.
Correct.
Yeah.
Uh the T dock, which is currently the end of the shared parking or where the restaurant parking would begin. In addition, the area to the right, which is now a portion of the shared parking, as well as the restaurant, the restaurant parking would become one contiguous area. So there'll be no more conflict on what is meant for residents, what's meant for Marina, what's meant for the restaurant. Um so my conversation and discussion is about that L-shaped period, L-shaped area. And we've met with the city and the civil engineer multiple times. With this design here, I note a lot to digest and a lot to look at, but when you look at it as a whole, the results are fifty-two resident-only or resident-controlled parking spaces, five resident-only or resident-controlled trailer spaces, which basically equates to ten parking spaces, just roughly for every one car. Um you can get four golf carts for every one trailer, it takes up two spots. So one truck and trailer equals two cars per twenty golf carts. Um and again, remind you that all this has to be done where you have a forty-foot trailer turning radius. So we did the most efficient and the most uh compact space that we could. Um so again, fifty-two resident-only parking spaces, five resident-only or resident-controlled trailer boat spaces and five golf cart spaces. And the twenty-foot uh green space along the whole uh inner, three quarters of the intercoastal waterway.
And hey, John, real quick, your fifty-something residential is including the future piped on the left side of Forty First, right?
Correct.
So but currently, it's only.
Currently, there's five boat trailers that park there.
Well.
I don't know how it translates to cars.
Yeah. But if you just did current status, I think there's, to your point, in the in the L, there's five resident trailer parking spots. There's five or six golf cart parking spots, I think, and about twenty-five or so cars. Again, kind of setting aside the ditch, because that's a future project that'll be next year-ish. Just trying to get current.
Yeah, the five current golf cart spots are here. Could go back in and it was just designated as empty space.
Well, and I was up here on top. I thought there were five or six.
There's five more, right?
Yep. And then that car area just above that where you were just pointing is twenty-five-ish.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
It's, I believe.
It's twenty-five.
Twenty-five, there's, there's a line of four right in the middle.
So, yeah, I was just making sure, if if we could snap our fingers tomorrow, we'd have twenty-five five trailer parkings. Again, the additional on the ditch is a future project. I just wanna make that clear.
Two of those are ADA.
Yeah, okay, sorry, John.
So the results are, again, those those numbers for the resident-only or resident-controlled. In the restaurant, there would be one hundred and fifteen spaces, which is thirty-one employees and eighty-four customers. The eighty-four customer spots are the the minimum requirement for to meet the Island City zoning ordinance. So we're now, we are legally compliant with this drawing. Um in addition, the benefit of this drawing, besides the eighteen-wheelers, is in the center, we can close that off to employees only so that we can put more employees in there to basically double stack to have more additional parking. Um and that leaves at the bottom, again, conceptually, that's not my involvement, but just from account, you now have thirteen Marina trailer spaces on the bottom half, twenty-eight dry storage trailer parking spaces, fifteen golf cart spaces and a hundred and seventy-seven automobile parking spaces. So altogether, this site plan in itself, instead of the very inefficient current layout, which it's hard to even tell how many trailers and how many automobiles and my golf carts. So I'm not sure where we're starting at, but the future potential plan would be three hundred and forty-four automobiles, eighteen boat trailers, twenty-eight dry storage uh locations, and then twenty-plus golf carts. And the reason I say plus is there's a lot of areas where we could have put golf carts in and elected not to in the fact that this was legally complying meets uh zoning as well as uh accepted size parameters for streets, et cetera, that the engineers designed. So that's the parking issues.
What what gains uh do we have for resident parking?
Uh we went, we go from sixteen only to potentially fifty-two resident-only, five uh trailers, excuse me, five boat trailers.
The fifty-two that you're counting are already resident-only boat trailer ones. The ones, the ones along Forty First Avenue.
Okay, so then we're going from sixteen spots.
Six.
So what?
We're going from sixteen to like six or eight, because you can't count the Forty First.
No, there's twenty-six in here.
There is.
Yeah.
For residents.
For residents. Trailers and green spaces, because this does take up additional car for space of automobiles.
And boats for resident, uh boat trailers for residents, there are how many?
Five. Five.
Five. But on a previous.
So hold on, there's five, there are five potential and there's five current. So that would be ten. It's up to the residents and the council to determine how to buy this space or use that space. That is not up to the restaurant or up to M J V.
Mister Mayor, can we step back to how this whole process and how it it evolved? I believe the the restaurant, the prospective uh Marina tenant and the city sat down together with you, your engineer Klein and expressed to them, to to the engineer, what your wishes and needs were for the site. At that point, Klein developed a site plan that was presented, which has its, that was reviewed by you and others with your comment that the entrance to the restaurant was too close to the boat ramp and you asked that it be moved. So, so the, so the engineer came up with a second plan that moved the boat ramp, moved the, excuse me, moved the entrance to the restaurant to the back of the lot, but basically was the same. Now, in that original plan that Klein put together.
Sorry to interrupt, but uh that, it wasn't the same. It was very different from this layout.
Right, it's very different from the one you show there. I'm saying it's the same as the first plan that he put together. In that one, basically, the city was using the entire employee lot at the back as part of their, their, their use with a pocket park or um parking potential area for kayak storage to go with our dock, docking area and all there. So it'd be a function equipped sort of like a mini Marina for us. There was angled parking along the boat ramp for, was it twelve?
Ten.
Twelve, twelve to, yeah, went from twelve to ten trailer parking spaces. The third iteration is the one you're presenting now, which takes up half of that employee lot and all of your shared park, all of the shared parking lot for exclusively for use by the restaurant. And the, and the community is left with half of the employee lot, basically for their use. So the, the first two plans that were presented, I thought, were very functional for all tenants. And they also had the opportunity that if the restaurant needed additional overflow space on the three busiest weekends of the year, then there would be the potential to take resident parking and say after eight o'clock at night, it could be used for general use, restaurant parkers or whomever. So I believe that this plan is not as beneficial to the city as the other two plans that were developed by the engineer. And I ask that anyone interested, look at the other two plans before making a decision. Because they're much better for the city and we actually get the results of a mini a mini Marina at the end of, at the end of our whole property that we can actually call our own with enough storage.
So a couple of things, one is that plan wasn't compliant with our zoning codes, so didn't even meet the needs. Two is it pushed all traffic from a boat ramp to three ramps where there'd be multiple boats exiting.
The second plan, the middle plan, moved the entrance to the rear of the of the shared parking lot.
But it didn't meet the zoning requirements of eighty-four customer spots.
You have more than you have now. You have access to.
It's not, I'm sorry, but that's not, I could disagree. Um I mean, you could move the green space over here, you could move resident parking down here, it would be a lot more optionality. But you're trying to, we're trying, it's an issue here. But you're right, if we moved over some of the parking elsewhere on the site, there'd be a lot more optionality, boat trailers. We were working within the parameters of this area, so if you wanna make a, you know, lease changes and things, then you should look at the site collectively.
We don't have that, uh, we don't have that uh ability, unfortunately.
Why? We're negotiating our lease, giving up our lease property for green space and for resident parking. Why can't we have a collective?
Lease property is.
This whole area over here, and over here. We were just trying to meet our minimum zoning requirements. I don't understand how we're, I mean, you gotta collectively move the green space and move some of the resident parking. You can't fit more spots than what we've developed.
The shared parking area is under the control of the city according to negotiations we're talking about. It's technically has always been under control of the city. Alright, that is not under control of the restaurant now. Is that correct?
But it's part of our zoning to meet the eighty-four spots.
Okay. So the shared parking area is what with the, with negotiations, we were talking about potentially having the restaurant use. And we're talking, we haven't decided whether it's gonna be exclusive or not, but that's part of the part that in in exchange for that, for giving the restaurant exclusive use of the shared parking area, then I thought the swap would be that the city would get exclusive use of what is called the employee parking area now.
Correct.
And what I see on your map is an entrance to your site through the employee parking area.
Correct.
And that takes away use with the city's use of that land.
Why they're all tied together in the previous uh addendum down here. If the other tenant can change this layout.
We're not negotiating with the other tenant, we're negotiating with you.
How are we supposed to get an eighteen-wheeler in through down a one-way street up to a boat ramp and then around and then back out if you don't have an?
I, I have confidence that.
They're all tied together is my point.
I have confidence that the engineer who drafted the original plans, he has templates that he uses to make sure an eighteen-wheeler can get in and out, because you expressed to him that you needed that act that ability. And I'm sure the plan meets those requirements. And if we can go back to him and have him lay out the, the templates for it to make sure that you understand how that works.
No, I totally agree. We can look at a whole number of options. You can't pass one piece in a lease and an addendum without looking at the whole site collectively. Because once you make a decision here, it affects the patterns on everything else. That was our only point is we're happy to discuss it all together.
These plans looks at the entire site.
No, they don't.
Two plans allow for the city to have full access use of what is called the employee parking lot now. This plan does not. That's, that's the only difference.
So let me, if I may. So we, um, when the restaurant came up with this idea um and discussed it with Mike Schuler about swapping the area of the private parking lot to the shared lot so that they can have their contiguous area, both where they keep their rush, their employees and their patrons, gives them the ability to reconfigure it in a way that enhances the amount of parking spaces. The swap would mean that the private, what's now now referred to as a private parking lot, where the employee, the restaurant employees um are parking, would become the cities to, for for us to be, decide how to, how it's used, how it's accommodated. We've been working with the same um civil engineer who um has been working with Mister Schuler and with Mister um and with Mister Bush now. Um and the, the reason, the challenge with us taking possession and having the city parking lot in that corner is accommodating trailer parking. Because the, it's in the corner and the area is just very tight.
Right.
In order to allow for the appropriate turning radius for trailers and uh track uh truck and trailers, car and trailers to maneuver. That's why you see the trailer parking spaces um outside, essentially outside of that lot, parallel um to the uh road that takes you to the boat ramp. But in terms of square footage of what that is, it, we think it's essentially the same. It's just that it's configured differently in order for us to accommodate trailer parking. The only difference between the original plan that we shared with you all, the restaurant has since um reviewed it and um disagree with some of the concepts on it of it, because it doesn't allow them to have stacking, which is important for, for their employees. Um is the number of trailer parking spaces goes from ten to five. The number of vehicles goes from twenty-eight to twenty-six. So, you know, kind of similar, but what we need is direction from council about what the appropriate number of trailer parking spaces is for the resident, for the city parking lot that would be for residents. Is five a good number? Is ten what you're looking for? That, that's, we need direction from you all, because now, now you've seen two plans that show different, different counts, essentially. Um and this is the plan that the restaurant has um agreed to because of their ability to stack employee parking within their exclusive lot. Um there is a big change in that the entrance to the restaurant does um bifurcate essentially the private lot.
Yep.
Um that is a change from the original, you know, one of the iterations that that we shared with you all. Um so we, we want direction, guidance, reactions from council about the parking counts, the concept. Um as John said, this would allow the city to essentially separate the, the, the property. The Marina would have its own property. The restaurant would have an expanded property for his customers, employees, and then the city would have that corner lot um for, you know, for resident parking, public parking with some trailer parking. And it would all be connected to what would be the, the, the green space and along the bulkhead uh at the top of the intercoastal and access to the new and improved public dock.
So tonight, we're, we're having discussions, the proposed amendments to the, to the parking, right?
So this is just one piece.
One piece of it.
Of the amendment, of the proposed amendments.
Well, I don't think there's enough resident trailer park, if, if.
Well, I've been. Can I just go back to Councilmember Anderson? So the issue is, is we have to look at this holistically and do this combined together. Because if you do want to have parking or entrances up here, you have to have an entry point coming through this area. So therefore, you can't pass the addendum as stated, where this can be changed at any time. You didn't have literally no access. You would have just terminated any entry point. Because this is a one-way street right now. It's not wide enough. So if you wanna make it wider, then we have to redraw the lease boundaries. That's why we have to do this all in cohesion in one group, because if you piece it out, then you're going to be cutting off different avenues and limiting.
Well, I believe the site plan is part of the um lease document for the Marina lease, isn't it?
That is correct. In both the, in both um amendments that you have in front of you to, to act, uh Mister Schuler has added his portion, which, which would be his portion. I keep saying south of the boat ramp, but I know it's not south, but you know, to the to the, yeah, bottom of the boat ramp. If you all approve the amendments, approval of that specific site plan is included. Um and unless there are any, any substantial changes to, that would need to come back to council for approval a- according to how it's written now.
So there are ways of reconfiguring this so that you don't have to drive a trailer through the public parking. But that would involve changing the south portion, the M J V portion of the lot. Is that correct?
It was actually a revised plan that keeps the road coming into the ramp, gives us ten resident parking trailer parking area and leaves the private parking alone. trailer parking area and leaves the private parking alone and the access into the area for the truck to trailer. John does bring up a good point. You have to be uh, nervous or, or respectful of the tractor trailers getting into defeat them and also Schuler's part of it as well. But this was a previous plan that, that one. And I don't know if we can put it up or not, but it was, there was ten.
I agree with, uh, Councilmember Puffin, there's probably been six iterations that we've worked on in terms of back and forth, like amendments. And so I don't know which one you're referencing. I know.
You can look at it. I mean, I, I think that accomplishes what you need.
Hey guys, can we keep?
A little less spaces.
Conversation going.
We got the tractor trailer route in. We have a little bit more private, a little bit more spaces for the residents and more trailer park for residents.
On consideration, there are no employee parking. Other than these spots, there's no way to section it off.
Well, John, you had a lot of go hard parking in that there version, which I know y'all didn't want to include in your final draft, I guess.
And I think this included a hundred and one spaces for use. Which I think meets our zoning, but anyway, sorry.
I'm sorry. Scott, did you, you have your hand up?
Uh, no, I think, I think, uh, Councilman Popsen made the point, it's like, you know, if, if these aren't done together, then we there's that nervousness that something could change and then that, that thing aggressed, aggressed to the other.
And, and I don't disagree with that. The only problem is, is we don't control the shared parking area right now. Because it's still under the agreement between them and Brian Verden. So until we do something with Schuler's lease and then they do their deal, then we get the control back. We can deal in good faith with these guys to get them the antle that they need and get our residents what we I don't know how we do it right now because we don't control that area. Brian Verden and John Bush now and Christine and Dave too.
So I'm making blank a statement. We're open to evaluating all options and looking at all different configurations again. But you have to do this in one cohesive decision. You can't, once you make decisions on one part, it affects how you have to do with the other. So if you limit egress or exit points, i- is all I'm saying. So I'm open to whatever we've talked about together. You can't do it in parts. Cause that's why we got to where the situation, or now it was done in parts.
But John, I think to, to this pipe dream plan that's on the screen right now, to Kevin's point, takes the first phase, the first step of this is to get Schuler ownership, if you will, so that he can give up those two lots and this proposed plan has been worked on with all parties involved, right? I mean, we're.
I haven't gone, I've gone over this with Douglas.
Yeah.
So I would just clarify that the idea, in terms of the idea that you can't do, it, it sounds, I think what John is saying is that you can't deal with the Marina lot independently. And that is, that's pretty much exactly what we did do. We told Mike, you know, if that, assume that curve in the road is going to stay there, that road, the dividing line is going to stay there. You work within the parameters of that road on your side of the road. The restaurant and the city will work on the other side of the road. So we did very much kind of segregate it at the road as the dividing line. We have not, I will say that there was one iteration that the city was kind of at the helm. There was another one that, uh, the restaurant was at the helm. The as Desiree mentioned, the number in, in my conversations with the civil engineer. The critical determination from you all is the number of trailers. Um, we thought as the staff initially that there are twelve trailer spaces in the shared spot. We showed, yes, today. So we tasked the designer with that being the golden standard. Try to keep twelve. He did initially. It created, um, two issues for the restaurant. One was the issue of not having stacking for his employees. The second one was having to cross the queuing line for the boat ramp. Uh, so there was kind of a minor adjustment made of moving the entrance up. That went from twelve to ten. So I think we thought that, you know, ten is fairly close to twelve. I think we felt like that was still kind of a win-win. Uh, from that point, it went down to five, which you have here now. We've since gone back to Klein and said, anyway, now that you know their desire for the entrance, uh, and for the sacking ability and their numbers, is there any compromise that keeps ten trailers? Um, he sent back just either, I think today or, or maybe yesterday. A new iteration that we really haven't, um, looked at in detail, but I do think that it reduced some, some restaurant parking. And I think that, John, you've indicated that it would not work for you all.
One.
So I think the ten to five, I think is a critical. If, if the council is okay with five, I think this works. If the council indicates that it has to be ten or more, I don't think it works the restaurant. So I, I think that's a point. That's kind of a breakpoint is the number of trailers.
Clarification, Mr. Douglas, is this actually has currently five trailer parking spots here on forty-first.
I, I would also say that from our discussions, we've always just held forty-first as an independent. We own that. We can do that with it today as we wish, independently of anybody. So we've, we've never included those counts in our analysis of the taking and going because we have it now. We can configure it any way we want now. We're going to pipe it. After we pipe it, we can still configure it any way we want independently of these two arrangements.
John, Sean, what were you gonna say to that?
Go ahead.
No, I agree. I just think that there's currently, there's five here. If this was done, it'd be five here before the pipe can even happen. So you're going from twelve to ten. That would be resident only.
Well, you have to add the five to the twelve, so it'd be seventeen today.
Okay.
So it's the same.
Those five along forty-first or parallel, which is tough. Could be dumb, but uh.
What's this little bump out between the, the restaurant and the blue? The little red, um, I don't know what you would call that. Um, almost a triangle, but not quite a triangle. Um, like this little area right here.
And so this is the eighteen wheeler, because there wouldn't be anyone parked here in the morning. This is basically empty. So this eighteen wheeler can now leave and make this turn into here. Once the eighteen whealers leave, usually by ten or eleven in the morning, people are going to park in there after they're gone.
So that's, okay. So that's why that.
Why there's a jut out versus a straight line. Cause if resident, if anybody parked there at eight in the morning, you can't get an eighteen wheeler into the site.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Johnny Clark.
Just seems like this is a process that we're trying to solve here amongst nine of us. When maybe it'd be best if we reactivated the real property committee to work with, with them to be able to come up with a solution. That, on this thing that meets everybody's needs, especially with the goal, I think the council direction of getting as close to the number of trailer parking spots that we had in the shared lot previously and let them go and work and come back to council with some kind of resolution. I do concern, I have concerns and I know we voted on it, but doing these all at one time, the Marina lease and this lease and everything at one time. I think would be critical. So as soon as we can get that done, I think we should, we should, we should look at everything all at once.
You'll make a motion and I'll bet Kyle second it.
Well.
We brought it to real property committees.
Yes.
Second.
Can we do that? We suspended committees.
Personnel committee.
We suspended the schedule, not the committees.
Yeah, I've got some public work stuff coming up too. And we did public and we did personnel committee for a couple of things. So I think you can, we can still do that.
Yeah. Yeah, again, I mean, which is fine because we certainly can't solve it here without Klein and other people involved at the table. But again, none of this is possible. Without the city getting control back of those two lots. Um, we can spend a lot of time divi- developing and designing whatever we want. That may wind up to one of your trash or something.
And I'd like to say one more thing, and that is that I think there is a good solution here. You've gone from original, what, thirty-two spaces to more than a hundred in all of these plans. So I think there's plenty of parking out there. And I'm sure the city is willing to work with you to, to make sure that any kind of exclusively residential parking would be available to the restaurant after eight o'clock at night. So that you could, although you can't count it in your, your zoning count, you can use, it'll be available to you. And I'd just like to say one thing about parking, and that is you never design parking for your worst day of the year. It's inefficient use of, of land. So you try to get eighty-fifth percentile. I think we've reached that with you on any of these plans, even the earlier ones. That benefited the city more and that we, we have an ability for you to possibly use overflow for those days of the year. We're not designing for Fourth of July, but on the Fourth of July, I'm sure you want to make sure that you can accommodate.
No, we were designed for the minimum city code of eighty-four spots for three hundred and twenty-three restaurant, seat restaurant. That's what we were put in the RFP.
And eighty-four is for both restaurant attendees and employees.
No, eighty-four is only minimum customer. It's three hundred and twenty-three seats. Is requires eighty-four customer parking spots.
No, parking design standards say you need about a hundred for that size. So that's what we're, that's what we're even that that's above what our zoning is, and that's what we're trying to accommodate you with. So I think there's a win-win for everyone.
Is the restaurant parking free to residents?
Yes, we, we even pay for valet.
Was there a motion?
Yeah, we got a motion and a second.
We call to defer to the real property, to defer this parking plot issue to the real property. Would you like a real comment?
Sure.
Councilmember Han.
Hi.
Councilperson Pogosian.
Hi.
Councilperson Anderson.
Hi.
Councilmember Ward.
Hi.
Councilperson Streeman.
Hi.
Councilperson Popsen.
Hi.
Councilperson Myers.
Hi.
Councilperson Pierce.
Hi.
Mayor Pounds.
Hi.
All of there.
Thank you.
Uh, well, John, if you don't, John, well, um, the list of proposed amendments. Um, parking was just a piece. Do you all want to go through everything else that y'all have received? We received proposed amendments from marker one-one-six last Thursday. We shared them with you all during your packet for discussion.
Wow. Me, can't that go back to real property as well?
Yeah, that please.
We can, that's, that's up to you all. Certainly we can do that.
I'll make a motion that we include that in the real property review.
The three, three B and C is going to real property.
B and C. I think it's B and C.
The, B and C.
B and C, parking amendments, correct?
Correct.
I'll second that.
Just to make you aware, um, the amendments that have been presented to you all include some requests ma- being made by the restaurant that would impact the Marina store lease. If you are taking action on that, I, I, I want you all to know that. And that's why I'm highlighting it to see if you want it to discuss it because if you pass the Marina store lease tonight, then anything, anything in addition to that lease would need to be done in an amendment that's being requested by, by the restaurant folks. There are some inclusivity clauses that are being requested that the city include some restricted foods to not, not to be sold in the store. There's just a series of other things.
Yeah, there's, we showed a few things in there that.
Pretty much, we're gonna have to postpone.
Well, we could be, we know when we get to the, we can decide what we want from Marina store and then, and then apply it to the restaurant amendment.
With their parking.
Not the parking, the other stuff, food and.
It needs to hold, it says amendments. It says amendment. Not mean, to mean, that means it says amendment, means amendments. So procedurally.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I think it should be postponed and all this worked out and done at one time. And I, I think to your point, Mayor Pounds. I, I do agree that you have to get control of slots, but all of this can be voted on contingent upon that happening. And actually, even after the vote takes place, if it's, if it passes, there still has to be the transaction that occurs between the two parties. And there's time for us to be able to work all that out, I think, and have this contingent on all that taking place. But I don't think we're ready to, and plus, you know, there's changes in these amendments that we haven't even talked about yet. I, I don't know how we get to. My, my.
Maybe we'll give me a show of Christmas present. It's going. So I don't see any way around it, John. It, it's too big to, but.
To what?
Wait, wait, wait.
Yes. I, I don't, from, from my perspective, we need to get the lease in place with the Marina and be done with that. And then we can move forward and talk to the restaurant about anything they may or may not want. They've now come to us just asking for additional items on their lease that they fully negotiated not too long ago. And now they, they want that lease sweetened.
That's not completely, I agree. We just received the amendments on Friday night.
No, sir, I'm talking about your amendments to this committee for your lease. You have asked for your lease to be sweetened. And you have done so without asking, without wanting to pay any additional rent or anything else. You're just coming to us saying, I want better terms on my lease. That's fine. You are welcome to do that, but you can't hold up business of this council because you want a better lease. And that's what you're doing.
I'm just proposing a parking.
No, sir, you're not. It's more than a parking plan. You've got all kinds of issues in that lease. It's more than just a parking plan and you know that. You know that standing there. Cause for you to stand there and tell this council otherwise is disingenuous. And I am tired of it.
Hang on, Coach.
I just received the amendments on Friday. We received them. I had a response. Know the whole site amendment.
I believe. You're talking park.
I believe that.
Again, this is all collectively. It's one property. They all have to act together. So that's.
Sorry.
I believe that their requested amendments are in response to the amendments that we are giving freely to Mr. Schuler. Uh, that is what has brought about is request for amendments. And I don't believe that in a, that a request for an amendment to a lease is holding up the business of council. I mean, if you just, the, the fact that you don't want to discuss what we're giving on the MJV lease.
I'm happy to discuss any of it, Councilwoman. Happy to. And we have. You want to talk about facts, let's talk about facts. But we've done it over and over and over again, and you just continue to ignore facts for your, for your position.
Excuse me. Sorry, but we've got a motion and a second.
On what?
On sending items.
B and C back to the real property.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, let's vote on that.
I'm sorry, can somebody repeat the motion on the table? For all of those watching this.
All you're voting on is moving items three, B and C to the real property committee for further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nicole, maybe it will be.
Mayor, if I may, um, I know we had a workshop meeting scheduled at five o'clock. I have the staff waiting to see whether or not they're going to be making reports.
I think we need to move that.
If, if we're moving it, I'd like to tell the staff that they can leave.
And we can move that to council meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll make that notification. I'll be right. No.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's right.
So we're having real property, maybe we don't have a workshop.
Well, both.
Why don't we take like a five-minute break?
Well. We're just doing the second reading and then we can go straight into executive session, right?
Yep.
Maybe we take the break if executive session.
It seems logical, Jimmy.
Well, do our work.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt an ordinance, ordinance twenty-two-two dash oh-five and ordinance twenty-two-two dash oh-four, authorize the amendment and assignment of the leases to Marina Outpost LLC and Marina Joint Ventures.
Second.
Discussion.
I don't know how we vote on it until we talk about the changes in the amendments, which we were going to do in executive session, I thought.
We could do it right now.
Talk about the changes. Should talk about that just to make sure those.
So we've got to back, um,
Friday.
Friday, um, and I know you and, and our city attorney have had conversations with Mr. Kit since he's out of the country. So why don't we walk through what those changes are to.
So why don't we walk through what those changes are to John's question and. Y'all can opine for where Brian solves some issues or items we might want to address.
I will let the city attorney opine on legal matters and the conversations with Mr. Kids. Do, so we want to go through and highlight all of the changes that we received from Mr. Schuler on Friday.
So we're starting with the fourth amendment, which is the Marina Outfits.
That is correct, um, one of the things that council, um, asked at that August second meeting. Was to further define, um, okay, I'm, I'm section four assignment and subleasing subsection A.
Sorry, what page in the packet are you on?
I'm looking at page two of the red line, I don't know what the page on the PDF packet that you received.
Seventeen, I think.
Just for clarification, to repeat again, the blue markings are our changes. And the red is Schuler's additional changes.
All, all of blue and red, everything that you're seeing here changed, came from Mr. Schuler.
Okay.
There are no changes that were made at staff level. With the exception of the ones that you all voted on in August, August eighth. And all of these were sent to you all, and we need to get feedback by the body on these changes.
Right, where are we then?
So we are on subsection four.
Page seventeen in the PDF.
Page two of amendment four.
Okay. Assignment, so, okay.
Oh, okay, everybody here, okay, good, um, um, so they reinserted what we had removed. That would define where the city as a landlord would need consent before any transfer. Or, uh, change in ownership. Therefore, the section would read, um, tenant is a corporation and there, and. There is a transfer of any direct or indirect controlling interest of the voting stock of the corporation. Notwithstanding anything in this amendment or the lease, to the contrary, a transfer of any direct or indirect partnership or limited liability company membership interest. In tenant shall not constitute a transfer that requires landlord's consent. So long as either Michael Schuler or Said Hamam remains the manager or managing member of tenant or otherwise. This is, this, we talked about the LP investors and whether or not change in those would require city consent. But this section says that as long as Mr. Said and Mr. Schuler remain the manager or managing member. Retains control of the LLC, that would not require council approval.
Quick question, not to be nitpicky here, but what does the term, we did not define, or we had the conversation, the reason we took this, how I think originally was. The, the term manager was not defined. What, what is, what constitutes a manager, is it gonna be the manager of the Marina, manager of the?
It goes back to control, it, who has, um, control of the LLC, that's a LLC terminology. That's the, that defines manager and managing member.
Still don't have the documentation to show who that is, right?
That's a question.
I don't know, rhetorical, I guess.
That's already been asked and answered, we don't, it's been requested and we can follow, you make it contingent.
Okay.
Subsection, uh, section six, management and alterations to parking space, to parking areas. The word spaces was changed to areas. This is a, I want to alert you to, uh, substantial change, um, on subsection I. Under no circumstance, such reconfiguration alter, um, actually subsection two. Any reconfiguration, alteration, addition, or improvement of the Marina store parking areas. With a cumulative cost in excess of a hundred thousand dollars, the addition was in any given calendar year. Shall be subject to the prior written consent of landlord, which consent shall not be unreasonably withheld, conditioned, or delayed. The way that it read previously when council approved second reading. That hundred thousand dollar threshold was cumulative through the, throughout the life of the lease. What this means is it would be cumulative up to a year. That is the change.
So the whole premise of us putting that in there was the fact that this is our property. And we didn't want any major investment going into that property until we had a chance to understand what it is and to get it with approval. And it couldn't be unreasonable, how it seems like you could put significant investment in our property each year without any approval. It counter to what I think our intent of putting this in here in the first place was.
I think you needed some measurement period, right?
The, the example, the example given was if he got ninety-eight thousand dollars in over three or four years, the way it was written. And he had to change an AC unit, replace a countertop, he'd be coming to city council to do that. So there needed to be some provision that defined the cumulative, uh, the period that we're measuring the cumulative against. Same as the fifty percent rule, I mean, this is a thing that we, I deal with in my office, that we can't really. Count it cumulatively over a long period, it's a, it's a managerial problem, and you get into a point where you're triggering it with a tiny investment.
The other alternative was our project that we talked about with council, but to me, that provides an even bigger loophole. Because you can have a lot of tiny ninety-nine, nine-nine-nine projects that would never trigger that provision. At least within a year, you know, would be, it would be easily measurable, um.
You can do the same game with it, I mean, seems like what, I, I don't know the right way to go with it. But the intent was to prevent any significant investment in our property without us understanding what it was, so.
So does this, and over the term of the lease, this is about five million dollars worth of investment. Twenty-three years times two. Two, two properties, twenty-three years, yeah, hundred thousand a year for twenty-three years, so they can put in roughly four or five million bucks of investment, we don't have any say over.
John, it just, this just seemed like a, it is a middle ground where there's a good one or not, it's a middle ground between. You know, to a hundred thousand or a hundred thousand per project, to me, my opinion, seems like you could gain the system a whole lot easier with a hundred thousand per project. Hundred thousand per year, it's off prices and there's not a lot for doing for a hundred thousand a year.
In that section also, he's approving council to approve the conceptual proposed parking plan. That you saw on the screen earlier.
And I, I think, I think it's a very good plan, um, and it does show two-way action on the boat ramp, so. It's part of what we were looking at before. Wasn't, um. It wasn't valid, I mean, that we could just, it was a two-way entrance and access all the way to the, to the boat ramp. Um, but the circulation will work better, uh, I think the private area for the, for the boat club parking. And, and, um, trailer parking and all will work a lot better as well. And no other Marina traffic has to, traffic to the site has to go through the, the Marina area now. Uh, in the future with the, with the plan that's shown, so if he sticks to that, that would be nice.
All right, um, case.
Changes, I mean, is this, I, I heard you say that these are subs- substantial changes, is this something that we should be doing at second reading? Or is that, I mean, what is the process on that?
You all can approve it at second reading or reject them at second reading.
Okay.
This is just more of a detailed question going up one, uh, section there, is there a particular legal reason why the terms leased were crossed out?
It, just to make both documents consistent, it was referred to as premises in other places. We double-checked that with, with kits and it's not material.
Okay, let's keep going.
Okay, um. Permitted use, I'm on section seven. One of the changes that city council voted on at the August eighth meeting or August second. Was to include on subsection four. Alcohol sales for onsite consumption shall be made exclusively as a self-serve retail transaction involving the sale of packaged beer and wine. That was an addition that the city made at that time, he, um, wanted that to be removed, that's why you see it in red, um, striped. Um, the, the, the issue came up through legal that the term packaged liquor. Packaged beer and wine, by definition, refers to beer, wine, or liquor. That is sold or in, for, sold and intended for consumption at a place different from where it is sold. So in that subsection, council at that meeting approved the onsite consumption. But by adding the package, the prohibition or requirement of packaged beer and wine created a contradiction.
Okay.
So, it, it, council either agrees and allows expressly allows. Which by code, you have to expressly allow the onsite consumption in any city property. If the intent is different, then requiring package because of the ABC license definition of packaged beer and wine. The city is creating a contradictory, uh, requirement there, okay.
What about the next one?
There was an addition in that, I'm sorry, there was an addition in that, uh, section by Mr. Schuler. Um, on the prohibition of bar tabs. Um, he included excluding house and customer accounts, so. Um, the way that it was explained is if people are boat club members. Or members of the, you know, members of their operation. They could, you could have a customer account where you can bill things to, and then at the end of the month, you, I'm guessing you reconcile. Um, the example was giving, you know, Pitt Street Pharmacy apparently has that. Um, so if you go there, you can, you can put it on my account and not have to pay in that moment. Um. Certainly could be.
That gets mailed to you.
It could, it could be used as a workaround to a bar tab.
Yeah.
Um, but it would only, certainly only apply to those people who have a customer account.
Yeah.
Same thing while. Yeah.
So, but that is, that is an addition that was not there before that was added, so you all need to, um, discuss that.
So it's bar tabs, basically.
It's not a bar, Jim. Right, just a tab. Still, please don't use the word bar.
Are we, should I continue?
Continue.
Okay, um, site plan, obviously, the, the, the final site plan that you have already seen would need to be attached to the document. Um, update to the landlord's personal property utilities in pre-existing conditions. Um, subsection B, um, establish, basically confirms the city's responsibility over stormwater drainage systems. With the exception of any negligent or willful act. If Mr. Schuler redesigns the parking lot and by that re- redesign or reconfiguration. Changes to the stormwater drainage system within the Marina are necessary, that's a willful act, that would be something that he would have to pay. If those changes create impacts that, or negatively impact the drainage system. That would be something that he would have to, though he would have to pay, um, as well as any negligent.
So, when he resurfaces the lots, he takes responsibility for drainage.
He would, because it would be a willful act that, what, what he's.
Resurfacing a lot will change the drain.
Correct. And he would have to comply with the city's, um, surfacing previous, um, requirement.
Is that, is that different from what we have now? Are we responsible for drainage out there now?
We are.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
That's fine.
Uh, subsection C.
Hang on, no, I'm sorry, I was gonna wait for the, the pre-existing, I thought we haven't got through yet.
Okay, subsection C is, it's similar, he's, what this section says is that the tenant is, is no, is not obligated. For any repairs, maintenance, or replacements of pump lift stations, fire hydrants, utility and utility lines. The city is not, doesn't own that either, those are owned by the Water and Sewer Commission. So that's just, again, a, a confirmation of what, of, of how that operates. If he wanted to change and move a fire hydrant, he would have to pay for that. But if the Water and Sewer Commission decides that they want to change it or move it, it would be the Water and Sewer Commission, no different than any other project.
That's fine.
Um, under such, subsection D, notwithstanding anything to the lease. In the lease, the contrary, tenant shall not be in default of the lease due to any lack of compliance with any applicable federal, state, or local law. Rule or regulation related to the state or condition of the lease premises or the improvements located thereon existing as of the date of this amendment. Tenant and landlord agree to cooperate and use reasonable good faith efforts to remedy any such pre-existing condition.
Ask the question on this one, Desiree, you usually don't see a clause like this, and I, at least I haven't, um, unless you're going into a new property as a new tenant. And this releases the prior, I think this would release the prior tenant potentially, I don't know the answer to that, but. Um, is there something that either they, they're, uh, get a representation that there's no known pre-existing conditions? Or something to the effect that, uh, you know, there, there's a reason clauses like this get put in?
Yeah, so.
What would we, what would we recommend for protection to the city so that we're not on the hook for some pre-existing condition that the prior tenant may have?
And this was something that we discussed with Mr. Kids and, um, I, I think it would be, because it would be legal advice. That we would be conveying that that be done, um, in executive session. Uh, what I will say is that the city, um, as you all know, we just completed the renovation of the public docks along Morgan Creek. Um, usually when those projects, construction projects are completed, there is a, a reconciliation of the permit. And the actual construction, and if there are any discrepancies or changes between that. For example, the placement of a fire hydrant or the placement of a, of a fuel dispenser, that is, that is resolved by submitting to the permitting agencies. As built, that's something that ATM is working on, submitting that to OSCRM to make sure that that is complete. The only thing that we are aware of, um, that would need, would require a modification to the existing permit. Is on the T dock along the inner coastal, um, one of the, uh. The, the half of that T dock that belongs to the Marina includes some racks where the coastal expedition. Um, kayaks are being, are being stored, that, those racks are not being shown in the permit. So that, that is a change that would need to happen if coastal expeditions were to stay in that, in that, um, location. Other than that, there's really nothing, uh, that we know of that is material.
Yeah, no, it's, it's not about what we know, it's about what the other, yeah, the whole, the whole, uh, premise of this would be that the, we get a representation from the current tenant, perhaps. It says that there are no known, a representation that says they know no pre-existing conditions that were transferred to us.
I, I thought the question was if we knew of anything, and that would be the only thing that, that rack.
The one thing I'd like to say with the site is that, um, the one thing that we don't know yet, but we could, could find out later. Is fuel spills around fuel pumps or the sta- any of the stations there. Um, but usually remediation for those things doesn't happen unless you, you touch them or move them.
And just as a reminder, the city a couple of years ago replaced those tanks with double wall tanks, so they're, I mean, we went through.
Test them frequently.
And they're tested monthly.
Good, um, so that's not.
Of the assistant, how it works director is also certified to do that. We went through this couple of years ago, it was a real big deal.
That's correct.
Why, why do we think they put that in there? Eleventh hour, I mean.
Just.
Just, just for fun?
I think it's to deal with the issue of the kayak racks, that is my, that, that's what's been conveyed. Um, the issue with the kayak, which again, is really administratively that we just, just have to amend that, that permit. It's not anything that would not or could not be remediated. And again, not knowing if he, if, if he gets the lease assignment and he wants to move coastal expeditions to another area, that would not be necessary.
Is there, as part of this lease, and now with this, uh, clause in here, um, particular that which wasn't in there before. And maybe I'll defer to somebody like a, a Kevin, um, you know, has there been any kind of an inspection or review of the entire property? To ascertain whether or not there are any risks down there, the bulkheads or the docks or the, or the, or anywhere. That would, could at least give us some assurance that there's not some unbeknownst pre-existing condition.
Countless possibility.
Without an inspection, though, we wouldn't know. And there's no representation, we're, we're basically going to assume the risk, is that really the bottom line here?
Yeah.
I, I think, I think you all need to hear the advice of council on this section.
I, I don't think I have to give advice, but I think in order for him to close, he's gonna have to do diligence. In order to close, so that's his, on his side.
He's not taking on any responsibility.
But doesn't, but doesn't this transfer, doesn't this transfer that to over to us? Yeah, I'm just asking the question. I mean, I don't know why that's a
All that.
State secret.
What did it, what this is saying is that if there are any discrepancies with a permit that it cannot be used as a default on his lease. And that the city and him would work towards correcting that, whatever discrepancies in permits um that may exist.
Okay.
Yeah, because the permits are in, are named.
That's correct.
Oh, all right, so that's good.
And again, the, what we are, because OCRM reviews that, we are aware that the permit not for the new docks, for the T dock has some racks for the storage of kayaks that need to be reflected in the permit and that would be done through a permit modification. Subsection D uh ten, that was also added um and which would mean gross profits. Tips. They would add tips to the items to be deducted from annual gross receipts.
Desiree, this is practice today, he's just clear, my understanding, just clarifying.
Yeah, that is correct, and we have, and we have confirmed that tips and gratuities are a standard exclusion for tenant sales or profits when calculating percentage rent.
Is it in the current lease?
It is not. So this is an addition.
My, my point, Katie, was I think it's practice.
I didn't ask if it was practiced as.
I understand that, I was just making a comment.
You're saying it's practice with the currently.
Correct.
And it, we've been advised that it's a standard, um, it's just a standard and uh, we double check, the restaurant lease doesn't include that as a deduction, but um again it, it's just a standard.
They print tips in as revenue and then they send it back out as, as expense on break. Yeah, sure, it comes in, it comes in and revenue, so it's a deduction from revenue on their P and L.
Based on, based on what Mr. Schuler has said to this body is that he would like to eliminate all cash transactions. So if you have a credit card transaction and now, now you can add anything essentially at a tip. So all of that would be, would be seen as the gross sales um receipt, so they would be deducting that from their percent calculation.
No. It's grocery seats. You have to subtract out the tips and then you come to true grocery seats, that's what you would pay your sales tax on ST three.
Correct.
Form. And the tips are, are not an expense and they're not revenue.
Correct.
But you, if, if you put them in grocery seats and then deduct them, you're paying tax on tax.
And that, that is what they want to avoid.
Yeah, it's clear to me here, but it's safe, they call it a deduction, but it's for manu- for manual grocery seat to determine gross profit. Grocery seats minus materials minus cost of sales labor is gross profit. But it's, it's, it's fine, we're protected here. But uh, that's the way it handle on tax return.
Operating hours, section seven of the lease, it's amended uh to provide that the hours of operations are subject to modification from time to time for maintenance, repairs, federal and state holidays, casualty events and other matters beyond the control of tenant.
Um, my question on that is just, I couldn't find section seven of the lease. But the hours of operation that were, are still in effect, where it would close it, what time, sunset?
That's, that's in the current lease.
No, this is the one where we went, whether it was going to be dark or sunset and we decided sunset was one of those.
No ma'am, that was related to the sale of
Alcohol. But the store stays open longer.
That's correct. And that, that exists today.
And those hours of operation are, are still in the lease, I couldn't find them with this, so.
I can, I can try to pull them up.
That's all right, as long as just.
I think they close at eight or something.
What, what, what he's asking here is that he can close the store for maintenance and repairs.
Yes, okay, that's fine.
From time to time.
All right, easements?
Easements. Landlord grants tenant and its employees, agents, invitees and licensees non-exclusive access easement over and across the balance of the marina and other adjacent property owned by landlord. Um, as necessary to enable tenant to operate and use the premises and purposes permitted under the lease. Basically giving them access through Forty First Avenue, which is public, um, public property.
And also the restaurant in the public aspects.
Correct, that, to anybody, there's no, it's a non-exclusive easement. Anybody can have access to those property. Can you, I'm sorry.
What, what kind of access and easement are they asking for across the other, the rest of the property, I don't, I don't understand that.
Well, I think that they would have to get to coastal expedition.
T dock.
Gotta get to the T dock.
Yeah, we, they, they have to have access to the T dock, which half of it is under their lease premises, so there, there has to be access through the city parking lot, the shared parking lot and the exclusive uh restaurant lot, which the restaurant lease already deals with this. There's a provision there of common area right before the T dock to ensure that tenants and um subtenants have access to that, to that T dock. So those are the changes that were submitted and included as part of this amendment.
Do we need a motion to accept those changes or what do you need to do?
Is it an amendment to the motion?
Probably not, right? It's just, the, the motion is just to accept it with the amendment. Authorize the amendment and assignment of Marina outpost LLC.
It's a motion to approve, motion to approve.
Right, with the amendment.
But in that whole conversation, I mean, there was one or two items, I think, that gave us some pause, that we either need to get some legal advice on in executive session or strike. Based on that whole conversation.
Or discussion.
You all could get advice on any of these sections and you can decide whether to strike or accept any of those.
Well, I think we walk through the sixth amendment. Just like we did the fourth amendment. And do it all at one time. If, if needed. If y'all are agreeable.
Okay, we can go through the second. The red line for the sixth amendment.
Page forty-eight on the PDF.
Forty-eight of the PDF. Okay. So sub, subsection, subsection, the, most of the things we've already discussed are included in both documents, unless there's any questions. I'll go through the, the ones that are just specific to this lease. Um, essentially on subsection three, removal of shared parking lot and private parking lot from lease premises. Um, you already had this that would, was referring to the share lot, this would be expanded to include the private parking lot. So nothing north of the, or, or, yeah. The restaurant side of the, of the boat ramp would be in any lease, under any control, under any management. It would be completely outside of the marina operations lease. And that is what is being reflected in that subsection, A and B.
And that's exhibit one.
That's correct.
And the only change is that it now shows that the marine at least includes the roads through their property.
That exhibit shows the entirety of that, of that bottom half of the boat ramp.
Okay, I have one question on that, and that is, there's a, there's a blue section that runs across the road to the boat ramp. And I was wondering, I don't recall ever seeing that as part of a marina lease before.
Are you talking about the dots? Oh, the, that is referring to the boat ramp, the boat, the boat ramp is part and has been part of the marina operations lease premises, so that's what's being reflected.
Okay, so that little portion there says that access to the boat ramp is under the control of the marina, okay. That's fine.
Subsection nine A, we talked about how they wanted to keep remains the manager or managing member of tenant or otherwise. Refers to, that would refer to who has controlled us defined by the lease, not by property.
Before that. I noticed they talk about exhibit two and exhibit four, where is exhibit three, what is it about? Is it just a mistake that they?
No, that's just not an exhibit that, it's not being changed as part of this amendment.
Okay, do you know what it is?
I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, tell me later.
Okay. It, it's not being changed by. Um, alterations to the exclusive parking lot, subsection seven. Very similar changes to the ones that we just discussed for the marina store. The cumulative expenditure of a hundred thousand dollars before it would trigger council approval would be in an any given calendar year. So that has been changed from what it was before, that it would be a cumulative over the life of the lease. And at the bottom of that section, there is a paragraph asking the landlord to accept and approve the conceptual parking plan. That is listed in one of the exhibit, exhibits as the site plan. So if, if you all approve this language in this amendment you've also approved his proposed site plan, he's not coming back to you all for requests for approval on that.
Looks good to me.
Quick question, um, will there be a resurfacing or? Tell us a little bit about that, just for everybody what plans are, he's shared it with some of us.
He, he's indicated um an interest in resurfacing the whole lot, potentially curbs where they would be needed and using he said he would use pervious um asphalt. It would look like asphalt, but it would, it would behave, it would be pervious. Um, so that's, that's what he's told us in terms of what that project would look like.
Got a question. The conceptual proposed parking plan. Is the parking plan that he's presented to us? And that, can he or can he not make wholesale changes to it without coming back to us?
It's my understanding that once you've blessed that plan he could only change it, he could only make changes that were cumulative less than a hundred thousand dollars per year.
But he can't come in and say
It's a whole different.
Or resident parking, he can't come in and do that, right?
I'm, the layout, I'm talking, I'm speaking to the layout.
Right.
He couldn't, once he's got that layout approved, I don't think he could, he could change the layout, now how he signs it, how he regulates it, I don't know.
Well, when you look at subsection B of the addition.
Yes.
It says above with respect to any reconfiguration, alteration, addition or improvement of the exclusive parking lot that is substantially in conformance with the conceptual proposed parking plan. That he would, he would, y'all would be approving, so he could make changes that are not substantial, is my interpretation of that section.
But eliminating all resident parking would be probably considered substantial?
I'm sorry?
He, he hasn't delineated where on his parking plan, he has not delineated, these are the resident spaces.
And in the site plan delineated, and we can pull it up.
Yeah.
If you all have this, you, you're looking at the bottom half.
Yeah.
His site plan delineates the ADA parking spaces, the vehicular parking spaces, twenty-eight dry storage parking spaces and thirteen trailer, vehicle trailer parking spaces.
And fifteen golf cart.
Fifteen golf cart parking spaces, correct?
Just to be clear, none of resident only, and he could change those spots at any given time.
The signage on.
What we're giving him approval to is to mark them as is right now.
You're approving this.
This parking plan.
Yeah.
But it doesn't say that he can't change, change it from that later.
The layout.
Two years from now, he can change that layout.
I would, I would, I would say that it depends how we define substantially.
Well, and you got the hundred thousand dollar.
Plus the hundred thousand dollar.
Yeah, yeah, I think the investment is one thing, but the layout is, he can, I think he can assign his footprint, I mean, the language that I read basically says he can do whatever he wanted to solve discretion, tenant's all discretion. And the, and the exhibit that we're about to uh have approved has disclaimer that it's all conceptual and, and all of that, I think, you know, the language should govern. Um, you know, he's got the footprint and he can do the layout, I think, however he wants. And I'm not, I'm not saying that's a bad thing, I mean, that's his business, but I'm just saying, I don't think we've got any guarantees on what the residents are gonna have or not.
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll get, we'll get to that in a minute.
Okay.
Subsection ten, similar language that we just discussed. Also the addition of gross profits.
Yeah, and that's where exhibit three is, so I found it.
Adding tips to the items to be deducted from annual gross receipts. And then the other two additions are in your exhibit four. For some reason, I don't have my red line on that one.
It just says, one of the residents shall not be prohibited from parking trailers.
And that was one of the additions that city council voted on um early August to ensure that he could not prohibit trailer parking along his exclusive lot. He has added uh, as determined by tenant and it's all in absolute discretion, so how that could be interpreted and obviously want to hear from you all is, he's not he cannot prohibit trailer parking for residents in his exclusive lot. But he has the absolute sole discretion, sole and absolute discretion to determine where those trailer parking spaces are and how many of them are. But he cannot prohibit resident trailer parking, which is what you all voted on um to be included.
So it can't, it's not I just sort of assumed it would be first come, first served, that island residents would know during the summer months, if they want to launch their boat, get there early, get a spot.
If you had one spot, it would be fine, correct?
But the site plan that he's presenting to you all, asking for approval includes thirteen.
I mean.
So he can't, he can't change that substantially without coming back to you all and getting that approved.
But he doesn't have to designate them for residents, does he? They're not residents.
They are not resident only, but he cannot prohibit resident only parking there.
Okay. The city lot, whatever. Trailer parking be come up, there should be resident only, yeah.
But they be where they.
If you come early, use the marina spaces first. Just kidding.
No, I was just asking, I mean, I guess theoretically you could put the boat club, uh, you know, boats and the trailers and for use for launching or have boat storage in those delineated, I mean, I, I don't know that it designates what those spots are definitely.
Well, but again, he's got the overall limit of what the boat club can take up, regardless if it's on, on land, off land.
I think it's just on the.
No, it's not, we added that.
That was an inclusion at the earlier iteration that he cannot have any boats from the boat club in the land, on the land side. So all the boat club boats would need to be, not, not exceed a certain percentage, but thirty-three percent on the, on the water.
Yeah.
The other change was um on se- section eighteen of that exhibit. Live bait. Subject to tenant's receipt of approval from any applicable governmental authority, seasonality, availability of equipment and availability of supply. That was in a, another addition. At the last iteration, the council voted on included adding back the requirement to have live bait. He expanded that to include, you know, based on availability and seasonality and any regulatory approval. I obviously can't speak for Mr. Schuler, but we've gone through each of the additions to this document from what y'all had voted.
I guess there's an exhibit five that. Systems and facilities.
Yes.
Under the landlords, there's possibility to repair.
Yeah, and that is again, consistent to the other language on the on the other section about permitted pre-existing.
Hang on.
Are we now going into executive session on?
Well, I mean. Taking the body temperature, there's only sounds like to me one or two, three areas that we may want to push back on, change language on, would love to hear from Brett on a couple pieces.
Just make sure we, you know, that we have to go. We don't have to go into the same station. We talk about it now.
Brett's not going to opine on something that's not an executive session.
If you want to go into like that.
Right. Well, I could do is make sure.
We don't have to.
Yeah, what what are you might ask me, what are the questions for people's concern?
And what I heard in fourth amendment, going back to the Marina outpost is the addition of the bar tab parenthetical that he added in there. Seem to raise some eye. Did I miss read the room?
Just read. Me.
It is. It was. It is what it was four months ago. So I mean, I this doesn't bother the team.
The only thing if we want to clarify to say it's for some, I don't know how to say it, but for boat club members or something like that, so that you can't have people just. I mean, it's it's a, I'm not sure it's important.
I don't the the lease doesn't say or the proposed amendments from Mr. Schuler does not say that the user accounts would just be for boat club members.
Anybody could establish you.
Yeah, I mean, that's just.
How it's how it's read today.
Probably still I probably still have. As long as I can.
As the other piece, a little bit of conversation on section nine D, this pre-existing condition. I didn't know if there was more language, one of their different thinking, strike it. I'm good.
That was good. I mean, all right, I'd say striking this is the tenant's responsibility to due diligence with the current tenant. I don't know where we are with this thing right now. I think we got four people that I think the five people that are going to vote for this thing should decide whether it's important or not.
Well, but it does.
No.
Well, you you had a comment around this specifically that there will be a due diligence period. John, to your point, six, eight weeks between whenever we do second reading to whenever they actually close, that's his due diligence period, his shooter's due diligence period. Fairing anything out.
But this is putting the onus on us. So if he doesn't do any due diligence.
We can't control.
We 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 now own it. I.
I I think it's a significant change to the to the amendment, but.
I think the staff felt like, you know, with this kayak issue, we know that we understand that and, you know, some carve out that just says we acknowledge that minor issue. But an attempt, I guess, to put the rest of that language back on him to say, you know, the the unknown things are between you and Brian to work out in your due diligence.
That's where you are going.
I mean, I'd be fine with that if you have a known thing, but I mean, the unknown is what could kill you.
Yeah.
I think I think it's a significant change personally.
Well, and or you write in add language on this one known issue, but that's what we know that.
But I don't understand the process if we go back and add language and you can't vote.
Yeah, but as amended, you said we could add a couple of them.
But what if he doesn't accept?
That's it.
Do you all want to hear legal advice on that?
On this pre-existing, probably. Let's keep going just to see what else we doing.
There's not that's that's we've we've gone through, we've walked through all of the changes that were submitted by Mr. Schuler to the amendment.
But let me just look at the sixth amendment real quick, make sure there wasn't something else that might.
The hundred thousand was the other that kind of raised eyebrows. I don't know. There's a better solution. The bar tab. I won't use that term. And then this pre-existing conditions were the ones that were kind of highlighted in my mind.
He should have an issue with the word bar. I feel like we should be able to strike out the bar.
Okay, we could do that.
Pursuant to his own comments that it's not a bar.
Under seven K seven. Section four.
So would we would read use of any times?
Sticking the word bar out. So I think so. We are down to the pre-existing condition.
Yep.
I mean, you you all need to approve a vote on 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 all those changes.
How about a motion to go into executive session for a very short period of time to discuss the pre-existing condition will come out.
Yeah, we got.
Oh, there was another one.
So what it was, what exactly is the issue that we're discussing in this session?
I think it's.
Either like it or we don't.
Well, I know, but I think you could either add language that would go towards this known pre-existing condition and only carve that out. I mean, I wouldn't mind here.
And I I would be an advocate of saying if we know what the if we know what it applies to, identify what it applies to. If we don't know what it if right, otherwise it's in the unknown is opens us wide open.
It seems like we're all in accord on that. So I don't see what the point of executive session is.
If that's and that I'm I'm okay with that. I'll retract my motion. But we still have to go in for something else.
Yeah, but we. John, are you dealing with that?
Is our lawyer good with that? He suggests.
For those that have been wanting to see what executive session is, just saw it. Sausage has been made. So we have a motion and second.
We got a second. I heard him say he's motioning going to executive session.
He withdrew his.
I withdrew them.
Back to the original second reading.
Just clarify.
Do we do amend that mayor, Mr. Mayor for that one item?
Let me ask say this, Scott. Yes. And I think, Katie, your other comment. The one due diligence item that we're still outstanding. Excuse me. I think we need to put that in the motion as well, that affidavit. So sorry.
I don't think it's not. I think it's just.
A representation.
Representation.
I don't think it's.
I think that there is information that the attorney would like to share with you all.
I just want to say, I'm not making any representations about that provision. There are things I can discuss in executive session if you would like me to. I'm not saying anything right now, one way or the other. There are things I can discuss. I'm not going to discuss them right here. If you all vote to go into the executive session, we can discuss them then or not. Just want to be clear for the record.
Does it have to do with things that you may or may not discuss have to do with these ordinances?
Yes, things you're talking about right now.
I think we need I make motion to go into the second session.
Second.
And we need to listen to the attorney.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed? You're off record at six forty.